Ask the audience to join us in the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of departmental updates. Before that, I don't know how many people are here for item number five. It is a public hearing. I do understand that there is a request to have that set aside, and I'd like to verify that that is the case.
That's correct.
So if you're here for item number five, it's our report number 97-108. That will be set aside. And Charlie, do we have a date? Is it until the next meeting?
We're going to re-notify the process and then we'll reschedule the next available meeting after that.
Okay. And also, item number eight, it's commission report number 97-111. It's involving driveway downs and water pressure. That has been pulled from the agenda table. So...
That's no longer on the agenda?
That's no longer on the agenda. That's my understanding.
Do we have a why?
Charlie, do you want to elaborate?
Since the request, really what tonight was not... This item was for information only. It could have been handled in the form of a melodic commission. You asked us to come back with some what ifs. Actually, there was an issue raised by Commissioner Lynch. It had to do with fire flow. We did some research in regards to what it would take to meet some minimum fire flow standards, and the information in the report is still valid. Anybody here has any interest in that report, the information is still valid as far as 1,000 gallons per minute, et cetera. There was no commission action to take on it, other than its information is put in the form of a commission for discussion. So, but since that time, that report has been generated. I think now, the next logical step with that information was for us to continue negotiating with Robert Mandel on how best to make it happen. And their representative requested that we meet. We concur. It's a good deal for everybody involved to some resolution. So there was no intent. If you notice the commission report, there is no decision that we're asking for you to do. This was a commission request on some what ifs and how to provide water, and the report stands in its own merit. It can be done through this type of pump. So there wasn't any action for you to take tonight, other than to see the report.
So there'll be further negotiations with them.
And there'll be decisions coming back to the commission in relationship to that phaser, Mandel, that was relying on the Clackamas County water or the municipal water provided by this pump. There will be decisions at some point, come back to you very near future, probably the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay. There might be a couple of questions, even though it's been asked to be pulled in the public. I think there's a few people, obviously, from the sound that might have... Maybe when we get to that item, we can ask the questions and at least have that input into, you know, to you and to us in regard for those further negotiations with Mandel in case there's something pertinent that might come up. I don't know if they want to be here, but there is no decision on the item tonight, but, you know, we could at least maybe hear if there's questions in the public. Let's move on. We have two public hearings, or no, excuse me, two departmental updates. First is the street overlay schedule. And Rich, I think you're going to be doing that.
Rick, you're already working.
Rick? Rick? Rich?
Rick's in the public room.
You don't want to take over public work, Rich?
No.
Rick, if you could give us that, and then we'll have a fire department appointment in a minute.
Okay. What I would like to do is call Leroy Wilson out of the street supervisor and have him give a quick overview of exactly what we're up to this year.
Okay.
Leroy?
It's known as passing the buck.
Delegation or something.
First, I wanted to give a... I don't know how much time I'm supposed to take, but I wanted to give two minutes.
Two minutes.
I can't even say two words.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
A little history of the streets, how we... What they're like and such. Their... Streets are made up of... Some are asphalt, some are concrete. Most of our streets are asphalt over rock, maybe over dirt that way. So a lot of deterioration takes place during the year. You'll see the ruts through the streets, cracks, different forms of deterioration. As the cracks increase, they become smaller. The smaller they get, they start breaking up. Poddles start coming. You start hitting them and complaining to us about them and such. But some of our repairs we do will crack seal or slurry seal. They're just temporary means to try and preserve them a little longer because we don't have the funds to do the job that we need to do. So we do them, and slurry seal will overlay and maybe puts fabric under the overlay. And some streets are getting too high ground, so we have to mill them off and put asphalt back. We've been trying to use fabric as much as we can. But the streets, we've had some changes from the last list. We're planning to do Warner-Milney out here, just the travel lanes from Kane Road to Mollala, to try and stretch the dollar. Instead of paving the center section, we're going to just grind out the travel lanes and pave them back, putting fabric under High Street. And we're going to do 24 feet wide. Some of these are not going to look as good as if you overlaid the whole street, but it's going to stretch the dollar because usually the edges don't wear out or where the cars park and such. So it might not last if too many complaints come. But... And then Center Street Hill, Main Street Extension is one we transferred for railroad because we had the water lines going in there that we wasn't aware of. And then there's some other small sections that we're just going to catch some areas that are totally deteriorated. And then we have a list of slurry seal streets. I can either read or I got extra copies if anyone would like them and if he likes them. The slurry seal is just a cheap means to cover the road up with a... It seals the water out of the road base. That way, it costs about 85 cents a square yard. And overlays cost $4 to $6 a square yard, depending on how you... If you have to mill it and when you use the fabric, it adds to it. So it's $4 to $6 a square yard. So that's why a lot of roads are... We're then trying to patch just to get through the winter because of our limited budget. Our pavement management program is once a million dollars to this year for just maintenance that we're needing to hold us at a good level because each year we are going downhill on our streets as far as the quality of them because of the money we have to put into them. So that's about all. I got a sample here of one of our reports. I didn't... If you wanted to see that our pavement management program puts out, and if you're interested, you can look, pass that around. And that's about all that I had then. The slurry seal has started the crack sealing part. First, they crack seal the streets, and then they scheduled about the 18th of this month to come in and start the slurry sealing. And I haven't an absolute date on the overlays yet. He was aiming for near the middle of August that way, or the end of August. So hopefully then we'll get before we get into any bad weather and such.
Okay. Any questions of Leroy or Rick?
Rick.
I said it twice tonight. I have one. One of the... I don't want to say worst. One of the real worst streets in town is from Water Parrot to South End Hill. Can you tell me what the plan is? Because I know that people are going to ask me.
Okay. We had plans to do that this year, but then we found out that we'll probably be going back in and tearing that up with a sewer extension and repair. Everything has gone... The infrastructure has gone under the ground.
Right.
So we thought we better save our money and do it later, after that's done. We'll be doing some patching and trying to smooth it out and make a pull.
So some patch now, but overlay after the sewer work.
Yeah, because a lot of that area will require a grindout, you know, mill it down, then we'll come and build it back up.
And Doug?
Has any thought... I'm sure some has, but has any thought been given particularly since the state legislature would invite the vote in terms of the gas tax to actually have a street levy in Oregon City? I mean, we probably have to do something. We need money to do it.
I am in hopes that when the city manager gives us the go on it, which we actually talked about it some today, that we'd be looking at that and any other types of revenue that we might be able to create. And Leroy's probably passed on around that.
Yeah. I have that same article at my desk.
That's just a hand for you to go ahead with that.
We're going to have to do something. We're going to be driving around a lot of bad roads. One quick question. I know there's been some talk of coordination of work out in South End because there's a tremendous amount of work going in. There's sewer lines going in, water lines going in. How is that proceeding?
Actually, I found all the information I could, and Rich Carson and I had talked about it, and we're coordinating a meeting with the county because they have several areas in the growth boundaries that they wanted to talk about, things that they was going to do that we might want to see if they could upgrade them to meet our needs in the future.
Good. That's what I was hoping that would be.
Rich, if you want to add any more to it.
No.
Very good. Thank you.
I will mention that the August 11th, I believe, the mayor and I attend a monthly meetings of mayor's managers. That is the topic. Clackamas County is going to bring back a county road gas tax improvement. That would be a topic for us when bringing back the patient commission. And the public, what that means, we'll realize some. And in fact, we did this. It was on our list today. We talked at staff level about coming back sometime, probably in May. I want with some other requests to do some street improvements.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to introduce our fire chief, Chief Jim Davis. He has some introductions, and then we have... I'll be participating in swearing in ceremony. Chief Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Powell, your commission. It's my honor tonight to recognize some individuals within our organization who are going to be promoted or have been promoted effective last month with retirement of Captain Joe Hart, who's now the chief of Malassa. With that, I would like to introduce to you first the first profile of the individual to the rank of captain. Mark, you want to come on up?
Come on. Come on.
Again, this guy's kind of tall.
I can see I'm right next to you.
Okay. Mark, just a little bit of background on these individuals. Mark graduated from Colton High School as a class president in 1966.
Good face.
Spent three years in the U.S. Army as a surface air missile launcher mechanic. Graduated from Clackamas Community College with an A S degree in zoology in 1971, and from Eastern Oregon College with a B S degree in liberal arts in 1975. He was hired by the Oregon City Fire Department in 1977 with no previous experience, and he also encouraged his brother Andrew to join the department three years later. He was a firefighter for seven, eight years before being promoted to a fire prevention specialist, and that's in the Fire Prevention Bureau. And also served his one year as deputy chief for the department. He was promoted... I don't know how that works. So you go from deputy chief and get promoted to lieutenant three years ago. And he completed his 20th year with the fire department in October. He has married to Judy for the last 26 years. Was a registered nurse at Willamette Falls Hospital. They have two children, Alexander 15 and Jennifer 14, which they're extremely proud of. As a family, they enjoy camping, fishing, and outdoor activities. And also, you've probably seen Mark out on the field as a referee. I haven't had the privilege of running into him yet as a coach yet, but I'm sure I will. He's also been involved with Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. Mark, recently, all these individuals have been on the promotional list for captain, lieutenant, and fire prevention specialist, and had to go through a rather extensive assessment center about a year ago, close to a year ago, to earn these positions. They are not just appointed. It's competitive positions through promotional examinations. Mark is your new captain and of Station 204. Congratulations. The next individual is for the position of lieutenant. This is Clay Blake. He was a fire prevention specialist, not for very long, before any position of lieutenant. Clay also was one of our first paramedics to the Oregon City Fire Department before my arrival. He joined the Oregon City Fire Department in June of 1974. Career began in 1987 as a volunteer with the Sandy Rural Fire Protection District, then the forest protection, as a forest protection officer for the state of Oregon and wildland firefighting. Paramedic on an ambulance for a medical American med tech. Currently holds a position of volunteer captain for the Sandy Volunteer Fire Department and a member of East Clackamas County Regional Rope Rescue Team. Became a fire prevention specialist in March of 1997 and earned the position of lieutenant this year in 1997. He enjoys outdoor activities, hiking, canoeing, golf. It's amazing how many firefighters like golf. Lives with his wife, Janelle, in Sandy, and who enjoys gardening, gardening work. And they are also expecting their first child in a few months. This is your new lieutenant, Clay Blake. This next individual... Come on up. Don't push that camera button. This next individual is Bob Mueller. Bob is interested in the fire service or has been... Got interested in the fire service from a dryer fire in his garage in Beaver Creek in 1980. And they needed volunteers, so he became a volunteer for two to three years. Liked to work, wanted to pursue the firefighting as a career. Received his EMT certification while still as a volunteer at Beaver Creek, hired by Oregon City in 1993. He also received a BA degree in theology from BWC in Oklahoma. Completed his associate's degree in fire science two years ago at Clackamas Community College. Has been extremely interested in the fire prevention activities for quite some time. Recently took over the development and is continuing to work on the chaplaincy program for the city. We had one chaplain, and he's already recruited three or four new chaplains to the department for his response on tragic incidents, both for fire and police departments. Hobbies include a lot of outdoor golfing, snow skiing, camping, fishing, canoeing. He and his wife, Jan, live in a house that they have built on nine acres in Malino. Bob is being promoted to the fire prevention specialist position, which was left vacant with the promotion of Clay Blake. And I don't believe that our new firefighter, Jim Thornton, is here. Okay. So with that, mayor, if you could.
Welcome. Thank you. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to ask you to uphold the code of ethics that you have within the fire department, and then after that, I'll ask that we formally swore you into the new positions. But first, let me read this, and then I'll ask you if you agree. "I shall uphold the code of ethics and standards of behavior for the Oregon City Fire Department. I shall be sincerely interested in and dedicated to my profession. I shall be loyal to the department and fellow firefighters and to the citizens of Oregon City. I shall be aggressive in pursuit to all educational and training activities. I shall be courteous in speech, both on and off duty. I shall inspire confidence and respect from my fellow firefighters and the citizens of Oregon City. And I shall uphold the laws vested in me through the city of Oregon City." Do you agree to these?
Yes.
I'd ask that you raise your hand. I'd like to swear into your positions. Please repeat after me, and when I leave, an "aye," you can say your name. "Aye."
Aye, Mark.
"Do solemnly swear that I shall support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon."
"Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon."
"And I will, to the best of my ability..."
"And I will, to the best of my ability..."
"...faithfully perform the duties of firefighter for the city of Oregon City Fire Department."
"Faithfully perform the duties of firefighter for the city of Oregon City."
I'd like to read one other thing before we end tonight, and it's something I'm sure these gentlemen are very well aware of. It's called a fireman's prayer. "When I am called on duty, God, wherever flames may rage, give me strength to save some life, whatever be its age. Help me embrace a little child before it's too late, or save an older person from the horror of that fate. Enable me to be alert and to hear the weakest shout, and quickly and efficiently put the fire out." Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. And also, as a symbol, a traditional symbol of the fire service is the awarding of the fire helmet. The orange is reflecting of the fire captain, not an orange, but it is. This is identity out on the grounds. If you see these gentlemen, they are generally the captains in charge, red indicating lieutenant, white indicating chief officer. Congratulations.
Thank you, chief. And we'll be happy to include the swearing of new firemen whenever that's appropriate. Okay. At this time, I know there's one person. It's Dave. Dave here, you had an announcement about your neighborhood, and then the microphone will be open for citizen input and requests for future agenda items.
Dave Atalot, 19345 Tower Crest Drive. We had our national night out against crime gathering at Chapin Park as a neighborhood association last night. We had, you're guessing, close to 75 people there at the big time. It was a wonderful turnout. I want to thank the fire department, and I'd like to thank them before they leave, for their participation. They had a truck there, and there's a lot of happy kids running around. The chief came and spoke to us. Officers came and gave out badges for the kids. We had a water balloon fight. We had free snow cones and just a lot of good, fun neighborhood activities. I want to thank Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Neely for attending also. We're looking forward to doing it next year, bigger and better, and participating in this good cause. Two people to recognize as the actual drive behind us were Kathy Pierce and Irma Sutton from our neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave, for your leadership in that area. Anyone else wishing to request a future agenda item with the commissioner? Doug?
I've got a few items, and they're not requests for agenda specifically. We can hold them to the end because there's a lot of people here.
I have a couple, too. Okay. Let's do that. Let's move on. Next is our commission report number 97-107. It's a public hearing.
Mayor, Commissioner, I have Paul Espy introduce the report, please.
Okay. Before I begin my presentation, I believe that the applicant has a request to continue the item, and I'd like to maybe get that out of the way before I start it, before your consideration.
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Paul Schultz. I'm an attorney with the law firm Reverb Caldwell &amp; Schultz. My mailing address is post office, Box 67, Old Oregon City. I represent the defendant, Mrs. Leach McKinnney, who are the applicants in this matter. And I do have a request that if the matter be continued, the basis of that request requires, just, I think, to explain it in its full, that you understand a little bit about the procedure of how this project has gone. It was originally approved on December 4th, 1996. My clients have told me, and incidentally, they cannot be here tonight. They had a scheduled vacation, a good portion of which was prepaid. Mr. McKinnney is the supervisor of paper machine number three, the oldest and trickiest, is Murphy. And for him to reschedule vacations, even if this hadn't been prepaid, would be extremely difficult. So they just felt they could not be here tonight. In any case, they have told me that they received no notice of the public hearing. The first public hearing was held prior to the decision in December. It turned out that it was necessary for the applicant to request another hearing because of a road width matter that came up that had to be dealt with. And so another hearing was held on May 27. Our clients did receive notice of that. And incidentally, I question the validity of that notice. Your ordinance says that the notice must be mailed to the owner of each property within 300 feet. This notice is addressed to resident. I've jumped mail. I don't think that that is appropriate compliance with the city's ordinance to send a notice out to resident. And apparently, that's the way it's commonly done, and I would suggest that that probably doesn't comply with your order. Nevertheless, they received that notice. However, and they wrote a letter and appeared before the client commission. And their concern is that this subdivision is being designed and constructed so that in effect is going to landblock the back portion of their property and keep it from future development. And following the May 27 hearing, an order from the client commission was entered and mailed to all concerned parties. The notice specified specifically that access was to be provided as a condition of approval. Apparently, what I understand, I'm told, is that when the developer read that, he said, "That isn't what really happened at that meeting." Went back to staff. Transcription was made in the tapes, and a revised order was entered, which was mailed on July 21. It said, "Applicants shall work with engineering and planning to see if there is a reasonable manner in which a driveway access can be provided to the client's property." That notice was mailed out. My clients were gone because of 4th of July weekend. When it arrived, they received it on 6th of July. Time frame for an appeal was that day. They came to see me. I didn't know what the ordinance was. I did nothing. I said, "I don't know what's happened, but I do know this. If you don't file an appeal today, you're dead in the water." So they filed the appeal. So immediately after they filed the appeal, I placed a call to Paul Espy, the staff person in charge of this project. He returned my call on July 15. In the course of our conversation, he advised me that he was going to set this hearing for your first meeting in August. I explained to him that I had just gotten this file. I had not yet even had an opportunity to get over to City Hall to review it. I further advised him that if this meeting was held on the 6th, I would be returning that day for a vacation. My clients would be on a vacation, would not be able to be here. And I requested him to set it at the commission's next meeting. This was before any notice had gone out. Mr. Espy advised me that he could not do that. I then confirmed my request to him in writing. Immediately after that letter went out, I received the notice of this meeting, and then I wrote a letter to the mayor, basically outlining those facts and asking them to be continued. My reason for wanting to continue it is, number one, I think my clients are not... My reason for wanting to continue it is, number one, I think my clients are not receiving due process by not being given a reasonable opportunity to be here and allowing me a reasonable opportunity to prepare their case. Moreover, the order that is appealed from, the last final order, the revised final of the client commission, does direct the applicant to work with the planning and engineering staff to determine if reasonable access to my client's property cannot be worked into this plan. And I am given the understanding that that has not yet occurred. And if this matter were to be approved tonight, you know, there would be no further chance to try to do that. So I'm asking that the matter be postponed, number one, to allow the applicants an opportunity to become adequately prepared, and second, to give all parties an opportunity to work with staff and see if perhaps this subdivision can be modified to provide the access.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Mayor, you want to hear from the applicant's
I don't have an example. Okay, not right now. Is there representative?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Stacey Fowler, one eight zero four four, Peterski Way, Oregon City, Oregon, and I'm here representing Hinton Homes, Mark Hinton. I would like to start off by saying that I think the representation that the McInneys have not been able to participate and have not been given the due process that they deserve as citizens in the City of Oregon City is absolutely not correct. Each and every step of the way that we have gone in this development, the rules about notice and procedure and public comment, and every other process available for the neighbors to come in and to talk with the city and to talk with the applicants and be present at the meetings, has been offered to the McInneys. And I believe that the McInneys probably didn't read the notice about the subdivision approval back last year in nineteen ninety-six because it was addressed to resident. But if the McInneys choose not to read mail addressed to resident, which actually has something to do with them, that doesn't mean they aren't given the due process that they deserve. We've worked very hard for a long time to get this subdivision to the point where we can move forward with the development. For many reasons, it is extremely important that we be allowed to proceed on the development path that we have been working on with this city for a long, long time. Ms. McKinney and Mr. McKinney have supposedly a timeframe of, that Mr. Schultz is talking to you about tonight, about not knowing about any of this until the very last minute, but it isn't a last minute situation. It's something, as I say, that has been going on and on. In April, we filed our request for modification and had the hearing in May. On May twenty-seventh, that was the very first time that any of us, as representatives of Hinton Homes, ever heard anything about Ms. McKinney's concern that she may not have access or that we should be working with her. We made ourselves available in the community and obvious in the community, and worked with the neighbors for months to bring back a plan as a result of that modification, which we felt was important and supported by the neighborhood, but never, and not once, did Ms. McKinney or any of the concerns regarding this lot come up before the very night of that hearing. Then, when the McInneys got the notice of the hearing, it is correct that the first, not the notice, but the decision, it's correct, that the first decision did say that we were to provide access to the tax lot owned by the McInneys. And Mr. Schultz argues that it was not until after then that they realized they had anything they should be appealing, but the McInneys were at that meeting, and they heard what was said in the motion, and they heard exactly the words that are now in the order, which is the direction that we should work with staff to determine if there was any way to do this. There was no condition that we give them access because, I believe, if you look at the area maps, there is no necessity for us to give them access. And if we get to the merits of this appeal, I'll, we will argue that and go into it more in detail, but the bottom line is that the direction was to work to see if there was any way to give her access, and quite frankly, there isn't. I mean, our plat is approved, and another modification to our plat to give her access through our plat requires yet another modification. And we have to proceed. We have an approved final plat. The McInneys then, so the argument there is that they knew from the very night of the hearing what the determination was. It wasn't, it wasn't that they had to wait until they came back after the Fourth of July vacation and they said, "Oh, my, look what happened." They knew what happened. They were here. They didn't call us, they didn't talk to us, they didn't do anything at all to further discuss it. My point, although I'm sorry I'm taking so long to make it, is that they continually sit on this project. They sit on their own concerns. They wait until the very last minute, and then they stand up and have something to say. We've been in there at the very beginning, working, providing notice, having hearings, and we have a right to proceed, and we really need to proceed tonight. Mr. Schultz has had at least a month to prepare for this hearing. He was notified and spoke with the McInneys on it, you know, in the early part of July, and the issues are not extremely difficult in terms of the factual basis of the McInneys. The question is, are the McInneys, if you get to the question, the question is, are the McInneys landlocked by our subdivision? And the answer is, no. And it doesn't take a whole lot of preparation to get to that point. I'm going to ask this commission to please move forward, hear this hearing this evening, and allow this matter to be resolved.
Any questions?
I have a question. Have, as I said, now, have you, or through Mark Hinton, who you're representing, have you quantified any dollar, how much it would cost if, in fact, this did get moved and put aside? Is it going to cost some dollars to someone?
Quite frankly, Mr. Powell, the impact is potentially so far-reaching that it's impossible to quantify. And the reason that I say that is, and I didn't plan to bring it up, but this project is extremely important to the final acceptance of the South End Sewer System, and no work can begin on this property until we have a final decision that allows us to move ahead. This is the property from which the pump station is going to be dedicated. All the electricity, the water that is needed to serve that pump station is coming. We've already had to call off surveyors who, Mark can't afford to have potentially leaving his property until such time as we have knowledge that we can continue. So it's not just the numbers that affect Mark significantly in terms of the holding cost on his property from now until whatever time it takes to get this hurt again, but the impact is snowballing at a very significant rate. We have other subdivisions way ahead. We have the sewer project out there working every single day, and we're going to have, we're going to have contractors who can't complete the job on time, building permits which are at issue as to when they can be issued, and the impact is very, very great.
Thank you.
If I might add just one thing as well, we have had meetings with Ms. McKinney to discuss the layouts here as well. We've reviewed every bit of this with Ms. McKinney, showed her where she has access, showed her what she needs to do to work with the city to continue to make sure that if she wants additional access in the future, she can get it through other development as it comes in next to us. We've also, Mr. Schultz represented that he didn't think that there had been any discussion with staff regarding the access as required by the final order, and that is also not true. We have worked with staff to look at ways to provide access to Ms. McKinney, and there is not a way for us to provide access to Ms. McKinney under our current subdivision approval, short of completely redoing the whole plan and starting all over with another modification and another layout, which would cost us probably the loss of another one of the lots. And I believe that staff supports the position that access to Ms. McKinney is not necessary through our development and cannot be reasonably given. So we have jumped through every hoop and worked on every side of it, as well as going beyond that, working with Ms. McKinney and Mr. McKinney.
Thank you. Did, did, hey?
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Legal implications?
I want to make sure that you've heard from everybody, and you're finished with your job.
I guess, just before, do we want to hear?
Staff's made a recommendation, I believe, that it go ahead.
Yeah. If there was anything you wanted to add to this?
Go ahead.
In regards to, not to the full public, but right now, the issue of should proceed or not proceed?
Right, exactly. And the primary reason why we, why I went ahead and scheduled this for the city commission hearing this evening was because of the hundred-and-twenty-day time clock problem that we have with this application. The hundred-and-twenty days approximately on October twenty-first, through the population of all that is sitting there. And so there is a little bit of motivation for staff to hear this item right away so that we don't put ourselves at risk for, yeah, going to file a, or a, 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 a.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I have three or four observations on this, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. I will tell you and advise you that this is a discretionary choice on your part. You may hold this over. If you hold it over, if Mr. Espy is correct, you will hold it over till a day just before the hundred-and-twenty days expire. So you need to weigh that in to your calculus, because that's the next regular meeting. You can always schedule, of course, a special meeting. What is and what isn't before you is also important. The merits or demerits of the nineteen ninety-six plat and development are not there really before you. You have a modification. And the modification, as I read the record, had several issues in it. It was honed down to one, and the appeal was made on one particular ground. As you know, the notice was later amended to say that we didn't get notice of the, as I understand, of the nineteen ninety-six proceedings. It's apparent that the applicant was present at one or more of the proceedings on this amendment. I don't think a due process claim would succeed here. I, I'm a bit concerned about the hundred-and-twenty-day rule. I think we could survive it, but it will take some money and take some time and take some effort. On the owner versus resident, I don't, I'm not too concerned about that. Fact is, the notice was sent, as I understand it, the file affirmatively shows that the notice was sent to the McInneys. The due process issue, you have a couple of claims. The first is that the clients are away, and again, that is more a matter of discretion since there is a hundred-and-twenty-day period in which to decide these matters, and also that the lawyer needs a reasonable opportunity to prepare. And again, that calls more to your discretionary ability to set this over than anything else. The order, as I understand it, as revised, directs that there be some working together. I don't read that order, and of course, you're the ones, and not me, who interprets the order, to require that there be any obligation that access be given. As I understand it, if you read the minutes of the planning commission, there's a, what some lawyers call a preparatory request, a request that everybody try to work together to get this worked out, but it doesn't require anybody to do anything. So what Mr. Schultz has asked you to do is addressed, really, as I read it, to your sound discretion. You may decide to go ahead, you may not decide, you may decide to put this over. There are consequences of putting it over, there are consequences of going ahead. If you go ahead, Mr. Schultz has preserved his claims, he's made his points known, and if there's an appeal on this, if the matter is ultimately approved, then we'll just have to deal with it on appeal. But this is a judgment call. If I can help you with responding to questions you might have, I'd be glad to do it, but this is in your court now.
I have one question. Is there, what if the decision is to proceed with the hearing, and at which time information is garnered, that we decide to settle? I mean, that prerogative is still there at any point.
You may still do that.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Let me just also mention that this is a hearing at which you may receive new evidence. It's one of those very rare items in which the record isn't completed at the planning commission hearing's office.
Right. You have a comment or feeling as to the issue of proceed or not proceed?
I have some concerns. Number one is the hundred-and-twenty-day rule. I, we've been faced with that one before, unfortunately, and I don't envy doing that again. Second of all, I'm concerned about the South End Sewer as the whole package, and I would like to see that continued. We put, we as a commission and staff and everyone who's been involved in that has put quite a bit into that, and that's going to be a long-term project for the city that's, I cannot see putting that off, and, or even having, you know, a problem with that. I think, you know, it's my opinion, I'd prefer to go ahead.
I mean, I guess, because we threw, if it were held over two weeks, the attorney general indicated, the attorney, or the McInneys didn't indicate how long it should be held over, that since the attorney says we could actually open the public hearing, and then at the end of the public hearing, defer a decision as to whether to defer it for another two weeks, I would say we should open the public hearing. I'd be curious what the exact issues are.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to support that also, to, I respect both parties in the process to be here and talk, but I think we should proceed with the public hearing, and it becomes the judgment of the majority of the people sitting here that it be held over, it be held over, and if not, action taken. Okay? I think we have to see, now, is there need to, what I'm, I was, okay. I would like, at this time then, to go back, push to open the public hearing, allow staff now to present the staff report.
Great, thanks. Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, I'm going to go ahead and be fairly brief. A lot of the items and preliminary aspects of the report have already been covered by Ed Sullivan, and what I would like to do is go to the second page and just focus on the section that deals with access to adjacent parcels. Staff feels, or staff finds that Hinton Homes has satisfied the access requirement in nineteen sixteen twenty sixty by providing access to all process parcels to the east of the site. That would be including, over here, this would be including the Hazel Grove Four subdivision here at Sub Street, and then there is also a Sub Street, I think there are two, aren't there? There's one Sub Street, the property owned by Rick Dawson to the east. I'm not sure if the map actually shows that, but it's a long, fairly narrow parcel, shaped about like this, in front of John Central Park Road, would also be integral to a lot of the other parcels that are on that map. I'll give the microphone so that they can record it and pick up. But that would be, that would be fairly integral to a preliminary plat effort that's being worked on by staff and various applicants to connect in underneath that Hazel Grove or south of Hazel Grove Four subdivision.
Just for, for maybe my benefit, will you point out the McKinney lot?
The McKinney property is located on Tax Lot Twenty Seven Oh Two, approximately northwest of the site.
Okay. So it's the triangle piece and beyond that?
Well, there's, actually, the, the, yeah, there's outlined in red here, all through here, and underneath here, Twenty Five Hundred here and Twenty Seven Oh Two. And then they also have an access that goes out to South End Road here, that accesses these two properties.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, when everybody says here and here, you're making a record, and it's necessary that you describe it further?
All right. Doug, let me just, pre-pause. Doug, you had a question on what he was pointing out?
I don't have a question on what he was pointing out, because we go to the document before, so I was trying to study it. There is reference to impacts on lots six and seven. Is that on the Hinton property, and is that numbered on that map? Is the six and seven on that map?
I believe lots six and seven are located adjacent to this cul-de-sac here.
To which?
They're adjacent to the cul-de-sac. They're adjacent to the cul-de-sac in the Hilton property.
I see some heads shaking. Maybe we could have someone point out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never the change, though. I'm sorry. This is a separate issue.
It's not picking up on the audio, and it's making a hard direct.
We're going to get a portable mic, okay?
If we wander away from the microphone to the map, it's very helpful to use that mic. Make sure it's on. Speak directly into it.
I think it is. Yeah, I think it is. Can I be heard?
Somebody verify.
Test, test.
Does it come across? Does it say on?
The light is on.
Test, test, test.
There's two switch, there's a switch, it says off and on.
And the switch is on.
It should be working.
Yeah. Switch is on. I think it's at the master that the problem exists, or the battery might be dead. Sometimes the battery dies in this thing.
Why don't you take that microphone and move it right over there?
As far as the court will allow, I guess I can.
And then we will let you finish your report, and then we'll try to ask questions.
And I'll scream as loud as I can. 6 and 7 are over here on the, on the corner here, and what the commission had asked was to rectify the problems associated with the lot shape on those, on those lots. And it's not really a subject of the appeal that's been brought before us this evening. Okay, if I can, if I can finish up here, there are a couple of things that stand in the way of providing access through what was suggested by the McKinneys in this location here, which is adjacent to the cul-de-sac and borders the Hazel Grove 4 subdivision and the proposed subdivision on the eastern side. The applicants wish to have a 20-foot access in that location, and there are a few things that I've outlined in the staff report that include the ability to do that. One of them was because there is an alternative plan that the applicant has proposed through the Hazel Grove 4 subdivision to the east, and I'll get into explaining that in just a minute. But then there's also an alternative plan that would also avoid building a road through a sensitive area, and by that I mean there are wetlands that that access would cross, which have been identified on the national wetlands inventory. Another one also, would also, creation of this, of this access here would create through lots on these two lots here, which is in direct violation of 1620-220 subdivision guidelines. So we really couldn't put the access there based with that problem. Staff and the applicant got together, this is really pretty much driven by the applicant, and we went ahead and looked at it and identified this really as the preferred alternative to the proposal, you know, through, through the Hilton subdivision. And it really, it works much better, and we have full control over the ability to provide this access. And this is located right over here. This is a Hazel Grove 4 subdivision, and it's a rough, roughly, it's shaped like a giant flag lot with the exception of a fairly large piece of property, about one acre in size, which is owned by Mike and Candy Rayburn here. In the future, they're going to propose to divide this into three pieces, and then they would create a flag lot, which would provide access to all three of those lots on the northern side, or the northwest side roughly. In addition to that, in addition to this access, this would provide access to the property up here, as well as the McKinney property to the west. And staff would have full ability to require additional road dedication to allow access on this parcel up here, and I'm sorry for the vague directionals, but as well as the McKinney property on Tax Lot 2702. And it's for those reasons why, for those reasons is why staff really pretty much recommends denying the appeal and upholding the findings of the planning commission on this particular proposal.
I have a question, not to get into too much detail on a future subdivision.
Sure.
But if that's initially planned as a flag lot, and then there are lots to the west and north, does then that necessitate the McKinneys to put in a cul-de-sac?
They wouldn't necessarily have to put in a cul-de-sac unless they wanted to maximize the lot yield from that particular lot.
From their own land.
If they wanted to just put one lot there, one house, they could go ahead and just have a driveway access going to that. If they wanted to put in three or more lots, then they would need to probably look at the option of putting a cul-de-sac in.
And where's their current driveway?
The current driveway is located to, oh, about the west, the west of the property here, and France on South End Road.
So that comes through the wetland area over?
It's approximately 20 feet wide, I think, something like, it's about 25 feet wide. Had they, I don't know if the McKinneys were involved with dividing that property, but if the previous property owner had the foresight to create additional lots in the back, he would have made some provision to provide additional frontage with along that road. So there's, there's the issue of a self-imposed hardship in this case as well.
Okay. Commissioner, is there any?
Yeah, I wasn't quite clear from now, now that we're having access, the proposed access is from the east to the, at the northern edge of the Hilton property. You mentioned the concern about sensitive area wetlands. It looks like the wetlands are located to the west of that, what's referred to as a building envelope in the map there. How would that access be going into the sensitive area?
There, that, that whole area is the Little Beaver Creek Drainage Basin, and the map that you see here, I believe, was lifted from the South End Basin Master Plan. There has been some recent information that has been generated from SRI Shapiro, who has been working with us on the, our wetlands inventory to update our comprehensive plan, and it indicates the possibility of wetlands being present on the McKinney property.
Could you indicate where that is relative to the proposed access?
I would need to, I would need to look at the map to give you an exact location. I think I would be remiss by just pointing my finger up at an arbitrary location. But I guess the point is, is that there's, there's a possibility, that there's a fairly substantial possibility of having a roadway built through a more sensitive area as opposed to the alternative where, you know, that wouldn't necessarily encroach on that resource.
Just to be clear, you? It is, you're referring to wetlands that is currently on the inventory, and that proposed access would go through, through all of those. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, anything else, Paul, that you would like to add this time as a staff report?
I'm going to go ahead and keep it brief, and keep it a while.
Let me hear City Attorney, then we'll have the public speak.
You've all heard this before. This is the hearing cautions, which must accompany a hearing of this nature. This matter is governed by certain provisions of the Oregon City Municipal Code, particularly OCMC Chapter 16.64 relating to plan developments, which also refer back to a number of street design and other standards. If I understand the appellant correctly, the chief reason for the appeal is found in 16.20.060. That does, that particular section deals with street design extensions, for extensions. I'll read that. I'll mention the other things that were raised by the appellant in the amended appeal, and then give you the normal cautions. The section that's at issue, as I understand it, says, "Where necessary to give access to or permit a satisfactory future partition of adjoining land, streets shall be extended to the boundary of the subdivision or partition, and the resulting dead-end street may be approved with a temporary turnaround as approved by the city engineer. Reserve strips and street plugs may be required to preserve the objectives of street extensions." In addition, the amended appeal also refers to certain notice provisions which are found in 16.12.190, 16.08.030, and 17.50.490. The criteria for this matter are, as I've just stated them, participants in these proceedings must address themselves to these criteria, or to such other criteria that they believe to be relevant to your decision, and they must do so in a way that it provides you a reasonable opportunity to respond to those criteria, and for the other parties to respond to those criteria. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow you as a decision-making body, or the other parties, to participate effectively and respond to those criteria will preclude the raising of this issue before the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals.
Is, thank you, is the applicant, well, actually, the, I don't know if we should have the person appealing? They really are.
This is more or less a de novo proceeding, so the applicant probably should go first and then the appellant. And actually, it's not even an appellate, because it's a recommendation to you.
Okay.
Paul Trey, N19313, Rollins, Oregon City. I've been involved with a lot of this property for over three years now, the South End Sewer Project. The McKinneys' involvement was very early in the project, when I approached them about the South End Sewer Project going behind their property. As well as they attended the meeting that we had at the McGlaughlin School, which was, I sent notices to everybody that was affected by the South End Sewer Project, including the McKinneys, and they were there at the, at the meeting, at the school. And that was, was back when Denise was still there, so some time ago. I have, I have looked at all that property. I've worked with staff in doing a layout of that, of that whole area from Parish Road all the way to McGlaughlin School, including the McKinney piece. The Johnson piece, which is into the city right now for an annexation, or will be very shortly, we've already had the pre-app meeting on it, that is the subdivision you see laid out. The Tolman piece and the piece above it is in the process. The city is, is working on the annexation of that property. I've done a preliminary layout at one time with the Tolmans to show how all those roads connected. This map that you see right here has three accesses to that tax lot that they say they don't have access to. I'll bring them out to you real quick.
First is Tax Lot 2600, which is the 25-foot strip that goes all the way out to South End Road. That is deeded to the McKinneys. They own the property.
I think the microphone's, no.
Just turn it on. It doesn't work now. Just speak directly to them.
Thank you. Testing, testing. Tax Lot 2600 is owned by the McKinneys, and it's a 25-foot wide strip that goes from South End Road back in to serve Tax Lot 2702 and Tax Lot 2500. The McKinneys now have an existing driveway with a bridge to that back portion of this lot. We laid out, we laid out, I did this, we laid out a building envelope for them with the current requirements, if they were annexed into the city, what the setback requirements would be, and that's how this triangular piece came up. Some time ago, I did talk to Mrs. McKinney, and I'm going to guess it's probably two to three months ago, I talked to Mrs. McKinney about the access to this, to this portion, because at that time I was working with the Rayburns on the minor partition on this piece here. The suggestion I had at that time was to get those two together and share in the cost of this, because I felt that the city, having, knowing that this piece is at some point in time going to develop, would want to probably require a half-street improvement on this side, and the other half on this side, and they would get their full street. That would give access to the back portion here. We just laid this out recently, working with staff, when the appellant's attorney says we haven't worked with staff. That's not true. We have been working with staff. We've laid this out. We've been working on this for quite some time. McKinney's son left a message on my phone about four months ago about this area not having access, that he wanted to build a house in the back. It was at that time I contacted the McKinneys, and said I'd be glad to sit down with them again and explain how they can have access to the back portion of that lot. It doesn't make any sense, it really doesn't make any sense to either put a road up here, because Paul was correct, there has never really been a full delineation, or at least maybe there is now, but we haven't seen it yet. It is, there could be some wetlands up in there, but moreover, it's part of the city park. That was required of our PD, so they're going to have to go through the city park with this access to do what they would want us to do. The, and then we're still going to, you're still going to have the same problem with this piece up here. They're not going to have access. So that's why this is the best scenario. As part of Hazel Grove 4, they will be building this cul-de-sac, and at such time as these begin to develop, they can then vacate that portion of the cul-de-sac and have the road come down. It's a real simple fix to this problem. Any questions?
Mr. Dun?
Yes, sir.
I was uncertain you were referring, I believe, so we're talking, we're talking about we have the access coming from the west side there.
South End, from South?
Yeah, that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then you were referring to some bridge?
Mr. McKinney, right now, has a bridge across here to serve this back portion. I've walked across to look in.
And that, that bridge is served by?
It's a, it could be a driveway. I mean, you'd have to put rock on it and gravel, but it could be a driveway to that back portion. You know, it's, it's as good as this driveway is coming up to this house right here. He could build a house right here in the front portion of 2702 and not have to have any access to the back. What this map reflects is exactly what Paul said. We took the newly approved, and we had done this back in, I gave it to the city, over a year ago, a layout which clearly shows their lot and how it, how it's affected by the South End Sewer master drainage plan, and the possibility of laying out a kind of a park thing here with a bike path to get to the school. And essentially, what we've done there is taken one that finally got approved and kind of laid it out here, but what we've also shown here is, is the 100-foot, all water resource overlay, or what do we call that, the 100-foot from the wetland boundary, I think it's called, you have it in your ordinance as a?
It's a transition area boundary from the wetland there.
And that's what this map reflects, as close as we can determine. We haven't surveyed it. We've surveyed a portion of it. We know where it is on our property. So what I've tried to do is depict the actual conditions out here, but he does have access currently to that back. The tax lot has access, plus in the future, with future development, he'll have this road going all the way up, which will serve both 2500 and 2702 with this half, this 25-foot easement here, and when these people come in and require another 25, which would be the full 50-foot city street, you now have a whole city street coming in there to serve 2702. I have more of these with me, if you don't have any. Any questions?
Any other questions right now?
I don't know if it's state or, but it comes from what you said, in terms of potential future access there to the rate of the partition, where this subdivision hasn't been done. That doesn't mean that that access would ever occur, right?
No, it's correct.
That, that is not current access.
That's correct.
There's no guarantee that will be future access.
Correct.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Thank you, Paul. Anyone else wishing to speak? I guess it's for the, the current config, I don't know how to describe it.
For the proposal.
For the proposal as, as described and as depicted on this map.
Again, Stacy Fowler, will turn it on. I don't really think this works, but. Now it does. Good. I'm not going to play that game. It is a little confusing to describe who's, who's who in this proceeding. And although I know who's who in terms of what we're all trying to accomplish, I am, quite frankly, having, having difficulty with the underlying basis of this appeal. And there is established case law in the city of Oregon City over the last couple of years, that when there is a modification... that when there is a modification to a subdivision, the standards and criteria which are applied to that application for modification are those standards and criteria which are affected by the modification. You don't get a chance to start all over again with everything. You look at just those things, those rules, which are impacted by the change in the approval. Because you get to assume that all we've done before has been appropriate and correct, and now we just need to look at the change and say, is it appropriate and correct? When we started the modification, it may have been appropriate to look at whether 1620060 was complied with or not, because we brought to the planning commission a modification of our plat. And it, it didn't look like the plat that is currently approved. In general, we had discussed with the neighborhood and the city, and we'd come up with a plan where we were vacating a significant part of Parish Road, bringing it into our subdivision, creating some more buffers. We ended up with two more lots, given that design. We ended up with some more open space. But for reasons that I won't go into, the planning commission, well, I will go into it, because it wasn't that it didn't meet the standards and criteria. Basically, I think it came down to a determination by one of the planning commissioners that they couldn't approve our new plat subject to approval of a vacation of Parish Road by this commission. And although the advice to the planning commission was that they could, they decided that they really didn't want to. So we realized that that wasn't going to work, and withdrew, asked the planning commission for permission to withdraw all of our requests for modifications, with the exception of the constricted street, asking that Parish Road be allowed to be constructed within the 30-foot right-of-way which exists, rather than within the 60-foot right-of-way which was originally required. We withdrew all other application for modification of the subdivision and only looked at, at that modification. Our currently existing plat was then, when the, the application for the modification to the constricted street standard was approved, all that did was allow us to build the off-site road at, within the 30-foot boundary, and it didn't affect or impact the changes to our already approved and finally approved plat. So my, my problem is not in keeping the players straight, it's in keeping straight what it is we can accomplish, even if it were determined that the McKinney's maybe should have been given access. Then the problem that we create is, we have a final approved plat that should be able to be constructed. And if I'm required to give McKinney's access through my modification, which didn't impact that road at all, then in order to comply with that, I have to turn around and request yet another modification to my already approved plat. And sometime next Christmas, we might be able to finish that process. And I'm not making a timing argument, as much as I'm making simply the argument that this appeal should not be well-taken on a legal basis in that it is not correct that 1620060 should have been applied to our request for modification. So first, I'm going to ask you to make a finding of that nature, that in fact the appeal fails because it is incorrect that we should apply 1620060 to this modification, because it's not a standard that should have been applied. But secondly, I'm going to ask that you also make the finding that even if it had been applied, it is not violated by the approval as it currently exists, because it is not necessary to give the McKinney's additional access through this subdivision to allow a reasonable development of the property in the future. I won't go on and over the access information which has already been given to you, except to summarize the fact that if the McKinney's wish to develop a single-family home, which has been their position, that that's what they want. They just want to be able to get a driveway, you know, a 20-foot out of our subdivision, then they can already do that, because their road already exists. And it's already, it's already there. Secondly, they have, there is a better plan for future access, and Mr. Neely's absolutely correct, that that isn't a current access, because that partition, which we rely on to show how that that development will allow the development of the access to their parcel, it, it hasn't been applied for, it's not in front of you, and it isn't a sure thing yet, nor is the McKinney potential development in the future. There is no development application. All there is, is an idea by Ms. McKinney that, what if I want to develop? What do I do? Well, you use your currently existing access, and that should suffice. There, there will in the future be another access there, and I can pretty much assure you that the rest of this land is going to continue to build out, and all of your streets are going to connect, and that's going to happen in the near future. But secondly, the, if you look at it, I mean, so she has, she has access, there's no question about it, we don't need to give it if she wants to build one home. Well, the question is, what if she wants to subdivide? If she wants three lots back there? Well, first of all, she can have three lots back there, unless she builds in the wetland, because there's not enough room. She's in R10, even if she gets down to R6, there's not enough room to put in a cul-de-sac and three lots, unless she builds in the wetland. And if she builds in the wetland, then she might as well figure out how to build a road in the wetland and use the access that she currently has and develop the, the whole property. She has the ability to do that. She is, our development does not prevent her from reasonable access in the future. She holds the key to her own reasonable access in the future. 1620060 also, in terms of legalese, doesn't apply, because I, I will make the argument so that it's on the record, that it requires streets within the subdivision to be stubbed to the edge of the property to provide access to the next property. And we have no street that's approved within this development to stub. It's, it's not like we're cutting it short and not bringing it all the way to her. It's that, given the design and the layout and the topography and the area and the developments around, there is no street there to bring to her. And so specifically, and on its base, it doesn't require us to provide access and design around a potential access for her. It just requires us to build the street all the way to the end, so that other people can use it if they need to. So first we have the, this appeal should be denied because the criteria are appropriate. Secondly, it should be denied on the merits. I'm not going to go further into the, the notice aspect of it. I think Mr. Schultz in filing an amended appeal does attempt to go back to the November hearing, and I think Mr. Sullivan, that's not a part of the hearing, and that, that decision was final. The question is only whether 1620060 should have been applied. I think that pretty much summarizes my, my arguments, and we will address any further issues after...
Let me see if there's any questions. Did you have a question?
It's an issue that she brought up, and I don't know if that's person to address it, but I would like, if it's permitted to have. Paul, if you could go to the map and show where this is relative to this proposed South End Basin stormwater plan, can you kind of indicate where that is?
Here's the ponds that are proposed for the South End Basin, right here, it's all cool.
Okay.
And actually, it's, it's not proposed anymore, my understanding is.
Okay, now, you, Stacy, you mentioned here that, and for me, it's, it's a real key issue, and it's this current bridge, it could be developed for access that is through the, through the applicant's property. And I guess my question is a dual one. One, I guess is legal. Is there anything in, in terms of inventory and wetland that would prohibit an access being built across that wetland?
Paul, it's an existing access now.
Well, it is, but is it, if, if there were, if there were, if there were actually a building to be built on the other side, if this was to be subdivided, could they, could they actually use that as a road? Not merely as an access, could they use that as a road?
I, I know that you will look to your own staff and legal counsel.
Stirring that way, pointing someplace else on the trip.
Nobody's answering over there, so I thought I'd just step up.
We weren't exactly sure which Paul's.
Let me, well...
Maybe it's premature, I don't know.
I think it's a good question. I would see if you'd agree with maybe phrasing it a little different, because what they asked for was a drive, was a 20-foot driveway access. I guess my question would be, could they gain a 20-foot, could they gain what they asked for on their property? And if that spits what you want to hear out of it.
Yeah, if you're considering, if you're considering access in the context of accessing the property, the rear property, 2702 out to South End Road, what they would need to do for the rear lot is provide a minimum of a 20-foot roadway frontage for that. Or if, actually, it would be an additional 10-foot roadway frontage for the rear parcel, in addition to that 25-foot, or the, or the 20-foot. So in other words, they have 25 feet frontage on the existing lot now. They would need an additional five feet from the, a five-foot strip from the adjacent property in order to do a legal land partition, to provide adequate frontage for 2702 in the rear.
Do we know the total width?
If you're, if you're talking about, if you're talking about building a road through, through a wetland, there are permitting processes with the Division of State Lands, through the 404 assumption permitting requirements, and the Army Corps of Engineers that would consider such an application.
You have to mitigate.
For, for permit, lighter mitigation, that sort of thing, yeah.
A related question is, would, were such a road to be put into the rear, would it negatively impact at all on our, on our, our South End Basin plan?
The roadway would have to be built in such a way to allow adequate flow through the road. In other words, a bridge would have to be built in order to, so that the, the flow of the, the grid wouldn't be breached from any additional stormwater, that's correct.
Does anyone know the width of Tax Lot 2600 as it touches South End Road?
25 feet over there.
25 feet, okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of the, in property?
Proposal.
Proposal. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the proposal and in support of, I will say, the McKinney's request of appeal? Will it be Mr. Schultz speak first?
Paul Schultz, attorney for the McKinney's. Let me start out by addressing the argument that Ms. Fowler made that this appeal shouldn't even be before you. As I understood her argument, she's saying that when the modification was approved at the end of May, the only issue there was the width of the Parry Road, which is access to the hinton subdivision on the south. And that therefore, the issue of access to McKinney's property was not the subject of their request for modification. All they wished to do was reduce the width of Parry Road from 60 feet to 30 feet, that was the only issue. Previously, everything else had been decided in December, the time for appeal had gone by, and so now, the only appeal that could be made would be relative to the width of Parish Road. I disagree with that for three reasons. The first reason is I disagree with the premise. This particular project was finally approved on May 27. Anything that happened prior to that was an interim decision, and the time for appeal ran from May 27, and any issue related to this project, in my judgment, is ripe for an appeal filed within the proper time from the final order approving the project. That's my first argument. My second argument is that we can appeal at this time because we received no notice of the prior hearing. The first time we ever knew we had a problem was when we got the notice of the amended order from the May 27 hearing, which didn't come till June, wasn't mailed from, it was postmarked June 21. And we timely appealed from that. And the third argument that I have, why this appeal is proper to raise this issue, is that the final order of the planning commission dated May 27, both the first one that immediately followed, May 27, and then the amended one, which was sent out on June 21, both of those final orders addressed the McKinney's access issue. If they were not properly addressed in those orders, then the developer should have appealed for having, for the planning commission having addressed them. He did not appeal. They are part of the final order, and therefore, they're subject to appeal at this time. So those are my three arguments why we have a right to be here tonight. Now, as far as the merits are concerned, we know one thing for certain. We do have an ordinance that requires, in any project such as this, that where necessary, to give access or permit satisfactory future partition of adjoining land, streets shall be extended to the boundaries of the adjoining land. What I can tell you is, the record shows that this issue was never addressed by the applicant with respect to the McKinney property. It was not addressed by staff in any of the staff reports, and it was never addressed until the McKinney's wrote there on May 27, asking that it be addressed. And even then, it was not addressed by staff. It was addressed by two of the planning commissioners, and that resulted in the references to McKinney access that were contained in the final report. No one can blame the McKinney's for bringing this up at the last minute, because both staff and the applicant, under the ordinance, knew that they had to address access to the McKinney's from the time this subdivision, land unit development was originally imposed. So if there was any error that occurred, it occurred on behalf of the developer himself, who had high-powered engineers and planners and high-powered lawyers, who knew exactly what they had to deal with as they finally wanted to get this thing successfully approved. Now, with respect to alternative access, one of the reasons that I ask for this matter to be continued, we've got some highly technical matters here that some people have been dealing with for months, maybe even years. I don't know the answers to them. I cannot comment on whether this alternative access, I just don't know enough. I don't know about this wetland. I'm told by the McKinney's it doesn't actually exist on their property. I haven't had an opportunity to find out. I don't know what's gonna happen with the property to the north of the hinton subdivision. I don't know whether that, if there's any kinds of problems with providing that access. I simply can't comment on it, and it's never been addressed by staff. So I can't even comment on a staff report. So I'm, I'm at the mercy of Mr. Treyhan, who apparently has a good deal of experience in designing what's going on in this part of the city. But I can't rebut it. I don't, I've not had an opportunity to prepare or look into things. That's, it may be possible that that's accessed. I do know, if it doesn't work, the subdivision's approved, we're landlocked. We got a 25-foot access, we can't build one more lot, much less the size lots that are going in around us. We're stuck forever if that access from the north turns out not to work, or if that property never develops. We can't force it through there without having the city condemn, and my experience is, the city doesn't do that for developers. So that's basically what we're saying is, we'd like a little more time to look into that. And if we can't, then we ask that this approval be denied at this time, and the thing sent back to, to address this issue, as it should have been from the beginning.
Any, any questions, Mr. Schultz?
The only question I have is, I don't, he's had a good answer.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm not for or against.
That's fine, I just wishing to speak.
Again, a long time ago, I'm past that now.
That's a fair comment.
Yes, very fair. Kathy Hogan, 1972 on Sausage Point Road. I was at all the meetings. I was at the one where Mr. Trahan sent the letter for the neighborhood. And I always remember my husband asking about where all these roads were going to go through and how these were all going to connect, and he never got his answer. So that meeting really was more about the South End Sewer and being an ally. It gave us no information on this. It wasn't as informational to the neighborhood that has no property that's going to be building on, like myself and some other people. So there wasn't as much information on that. I want the plan to stay as it is. I thought for it. I won it from their modification because their modification had no justification. My husband had a nice long letter that you didn't get in the package. As wide as no justification, it was all new application. So I can understand why they didn't want to go through the process again because we've already been through the process. I can understand the McKinneys and their lawyer wanting to make sure and have some assurance that they have some access. If that's a viable access and will come in the future, then I'd say go with it. And as for Ms. Fowler saying all the neighbors could agree with everything, as you know, they didn't agree with it. And she did not, and Mr. Trahan did not connect with us. Otherwise, we wouldn't object to your modification adding to the house.
Anyone else with a comment or question? Does the applicant push to have any further comments?
Very briefly. First, I'm sorry, if I said all of the neighbors, I didn't mean every one of them. The number of the ones that we've worked with, so don't want to misrepresent that. But I appreciate Ms. Hogan's comments, thank you. First, one of the points that was made by Mr. Schultz was that this access issue was never addressed until the McKinneys brought it up. We complied with the ordinance. The information has always been in the file, which visually shows that this property is not landlocked. Our development does not landlock this property. There is a significant, it's not just the access to the north right there, but it comes out along the side, over here as well, to the, what looks like the east here, the property boundary into that, into right here. And I'm sorry about that. Very hard to describe without numbers up there. But bottom line is, the property is not landlocked. We do not landlock the McKinney's property. Secondly, Mr. Schultz said that if you approve this subdivision, they're landlocked forever and they can't get an access, they can't force an access unless the city condemns. And that is absolutely, positively wrong. Oregon law requires that all people are allowed to have access to their property. And they provide procedures for people to negotiate accesses through other people's property if they need it for access to their property. And if the people don't agree to give them access, then the court will require them to do so, and they will discuss dollars. So this city does not need to condemn any property for the McKinneys to have access in the future. Hopefully, as a result of development, as things come up here, access will be easily provided to them, and there won't be any question by the time they get around to developing that one house if they ever do. But the bottom line is, the McKinneys have the power to have access to develop this property in any way that it can be developed under the criteria and the ordinances in the future. And our subdivision does not prevent that from happening. Thank you.
I'm just going to close the public hearing and take it to the commission level. Any questions of staff or comments?
I have a question, Paul, staff, Paul. When Paul was going through his comments, he mentioned that he has in fact worked with staff to develop a plan there. Is that, is that the case?
We've been, yeah, we've been involved with Mr. Trahan and other developers to do what we call shadow plots of some of the more difficult properties in the area. Correct.
Okay. I think that's it.
I have a follow-up with that. In that regard, in the shadow plots as you described it, do you see that future access to this triangle would be from the northeast, from the Rayburn Inn to property to the west of that?
That appears to be the most viable proposal. That can be accessed by almost a full width street.
I'm going to come back again. Since it isn't a subdivision that's been approved at this point, I'm kind of mixing out of the consideration the Rayburn access suggestion because it's nothing in three, four, or six of them. It's still a concern about the potential road or bridge that could go over the wetlands across the, their current property of lot 2702. And I want to make clear that such a road could be built, even if there was some minor subdivisions that resulted in houses being built on either side of that wetland area. Do you feel that a road could be built to actually serve those houses?
I would be somewhat uncomfortable in giving a full definitive answer on that since I don't have any input from the engineering staff at this point. When I look or think about a road, I think about, you know, a sheet of asphalt, a hill under it going over, you know, the wetland or the ravine that represents the wetland and possibly approaching the flow of the South End Sewer or the South End Basin. I suspect that, you know, if there was enough capital or if there was enough money accumulated, there could be a bridge built. On, you know, lots of different contingencies. One of them would be, you know, a successful permitting process through Army Corps of Engineers and Division of State Lands. They would need to delineate the wetland. It would be considerably more complex to provide the access for the McKinneys as well as the applicant or the Hinton property to provide access in this location than the preferred alternative.
Another comment was made by counsel for the McKinneys. I mentioned that they believe there's no, there's no wetlands on that property. Do we, they are in fact, do we have that documented that that is in fact wetlands on that property?
We have, we have, the National Wetlands Executive shows the general location of Little Beaver Creek in that area, which is identified as a low stream wetland. We also have draft maps that were produced by SRA Shapiro in the effort to update our comprehensive plan for goal five.
Draft map, meaning?
They have, draft maps, they have not been adopted by the planning commission of you folks. So in this case, they would need to delineate or have a delineation study on what we suspect is out there in order to prove or disprove the presence of a wetland at this point in time.
And we in fact are in the process of having that done through our master planning.
We are in the process of having that done. However, the McKinneys, we sent out a notice to have all of the properties identified or delineated preliminarily in order to identify the wetlands in a positive fashion on those maps. However, McKinneys responded negatively to that query and did not allow any of the SRA Shapiro staff on the property to determine this.
I just wanted to make a comment on the wetlands. I hope there's a misconception that for something to be a wetland, you're going to have to see surface water right there. There's some other definitions of wetlands that have to do with the length of time that water may be a certain distance under the surface as well. So the fact that people see surface waters does not mean it's not a wetland area.
Well, Commissioner Neely, there's three different criteria that are outlined by the Army Corps of Engineers, which is hydrology, soil makeup, and vegetation. And it doesn't necessarily mean that there, that surface water is present to indicate wetland hydrology.
You have to have two of the three.
That's correct.
You can have plants and soil and not even water to be a wetland.
That's right.
And you had a?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. There are really three issues for you to deal with here. The first is, is this matter properly before you? This is a de novo matter, and that means that anybody can raise new issues. The only issue that I understand, besides the notice issue, that's been raised is, how do you construe 16.20.060, which I'll read to you again in a moment. On the notice, the McKinneys did participate, did raise the issue of access, did raise it again in these proceedings. I think they're covered. I think this is a legitimate issue for you to determine at this level. The second question is whether you want to close the hearing and proceed to decision or whether or not you wish to carry this over bearing in mind the 120-day rule in that the applicant has not waived the 120-day. The third thing, and the most important in my view, is how do you construe this ordinance provision? I'm going to read it to you again slowly. I'm not sure if you have it laid out in the papers that you have. It says, "Where necessary to give access to or permit a satisfactory future partition of adjoining land, streets shall be extended to the boundary of the subdivision or partition. And the resulting dead-end street may be approved with a temporary turnaround as approved by the city engineer. Reserve strips and street plugs may be required to preserve the objectives of street extensions." The operative language here is whether or not this is a situation in which you find it necessary to give access to or permit a satisfactory future partition to adjacent land, and if so, whether streets shall be extended to the boundary of the subdivision or partition. You have some relative freedom in interpreting your code. You are the ones who adopted it, and Luba and the courts will be generous to you. I do ask you though to parse that sentence, that first sentence of the two, because that I think is going to be the basis for your determination. If we can help you, we'll be glad to try.
Any comments, questions?
I think the issue is still access. It's the regular partition access. I don't think we should consider it because it isn't available access. The available access that I see really is, is to the property that is shown on the map at the right side of the wetlands that refer to this building envelope. It seems to me that access is through the road coming from the other side of that wetlands. And that, I think that's, to me, is what the important issue is. Is that potential access for a road or not? If it is, if it actually is, then I don't think there's merit in the appeal. If it is not, I think there is merit in the appeal. It's not at all clear to me. We're not getting that definitive an answer from staff. Staff is indicating that they feel they have to speak to an engineer, one of the city engineers, before they would make that decision.
Let me, can I, I haven't said, can I say a comment before I, but even bigger? To maybe shed some light, just to shed a little light on that. Because I think it is appropriate to look at the Rayburn piece of property, and I'll tell you why. In the 16.02.06.0 provision, the real question is, is it necessary for us to dedicate to provide this future access? When I ask myself that question, I would say, no. It is not necessary for us to provide the future access. And that is not based on whether there is a road or even a plan on the Rayburn piece of property, but can it be there? And the answer to me is yes, it can be there. Is it? It's not designed yet. It can be, yes, it can be. And that becomes then a part of the process and the criteria for approval of that partitioning or approval of that subdivision that the planning commission would wrestle with at the time of the planning committee. It really boils down to that. And I think that that is probably the most likely in my mind, but that's an opinion. But I think, is it necessary? To me, if the Rayburn piece were developed, it would be a whole different spin on access to that parcel for me. Because then it would be absolutely necessary for us to require access from this development to that piece. Because I think the wetland is going to be a real problem to get across. But I see it as not being necessary because of the sequence of development. And it's kind of like, sometimes certain parcels don't develop because sewers aren't to them yet. And sometimes certain parcels don't develop. In this case, maybe that back parcel because the access isn't there yet. But we haven't said it can never be there, so that's.
May I just query the counsel on that? Is that an interpretation or a fact in law? The fact that it can be or it could be?
You're allowed to make an interpretation of the facts, and you will be upheld under that interpretation unless there's no, to use the magic legal words, substantial evidence in the whole record. In other words, unless it's beyond and beyond. Some, a reasonable person could not have believed the way the city commissioner believed. You have another facet of this, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Neely, and that is the issue of interpretation of the law. In this case, your own code. And this is governed, the lawyers here well know this, by a case called Clark versus Jackson County, in which the Oregon Supreme Court said in 1994 that Luba and the inferior courts must defer to your interpretation of your ordinance unless, and this is a gloss placed on by later cases, it is so wholly unreasonable as to be unbelievable. I call it, it's not in the case law, but I call it the fall-down laughing rule. That unless someone falls down laughing over your interpretation, you're probably going to be upheld.
They're not laughing.
Fortunately, everybody's sitting down at the moment.
Well, other than my previous comments, I also want to make the point, I felt, I feel after hearing the testimony that the McKinneys had been given adequate notice, and I feel like the due process is not applicable here. I believe that staff and developers have worked together to develop a plan, and I feel that we've done that in a positive way we should following the great recommendations of the planning commission. I believe there's appropriate access to the tax lots today. If there was a subdivision on the drawing board today, it might be a different story. But for what we've got out there now, I believe it's appropriate. And I also don't believe that it's going to be landlocked. I tend to believe that there is access now, there will be access, and I believe the courts will help along that way if that becomes a problem. And I also tend to agree that the development doesn't impact this area. And I would recommend that we, you know, close the hearing, continue on and deny the, deny the appeal.
Actually, what you ought to do is affirm the planning commission if you're heading that direction. Because this is a matter that is a recommendation to you rather than being a full-blown appeal.
So it would be to affirm the planning commission decision?
That's correct.
It has been moved?
So moved.
I'd like to, I will second the motion. Can you second, or you're second?
You can step down from the chair if that's what you all really want and second, and then go back and assume your chair.
Does he step down from the chair?
No, just stay here. Commissioner Powell would take over for the purpose of the second, and then the mayor would resume the chair.
Okay. Now you can second.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
And we have some discussion. If there was, if there, if I had to put forward a motion, I was actually deterred until the next commission meeting. I realize we're right on top of 120-day, but we still have a, we still have a gray stain today. I'd like to, I'd like to get the attorney's opinion frankly about the road access across the, the engineering, the engineer's opinion. Were this motion to fail, it's void, I would put forward such a motion.
What, let me just say a couple of things that I was thinking about as, because I think that's also a very legitimate consideration. However, I think it becomes an incumbent upon McKinney's to analyze that as. However, I think it becomes an incumbent upon McKinneys to analyze that as to its feasibility and therefore its probability. And it may be as simple as including a portion of this property on this side of the wetland area as a part of this future tax lot, and it now becomes a driveway, not a road, and now it becomes a very simple building, or a simpler building. It's like a flag lot to the road. So those, I mean, we could create so many scenarios, and in my mind, I kind of went away from that when I felt, when I really focused in on the language of that, being, is it necessary? And that's where I came down on my thought, but, because I think that going across the wetland is going to be very difficult. And I think if we're based on just that, I think that that access will be very hard to do. It could be done. I believe it can be, but I think feasibly it won't be done. But I do believe that the necessity part comes in.
I concur on your point.
So, anyway. Okay, we have any other further, any further discussion? Gene, would you like to pull the...
Yes, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Neely.
No.
Mayor Powell.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can I make a statement?
Sure.
It's nothing to do with this particular proposal, has to do with maps that were presented. We're presented with this map, the hidden property is not shown on this map, it's in other words, the linear map that we've received. We have some lots that are referred to as Lot 6 and 7. Only 6 and 7 that I saw on the map, and then 6 and 7 I thought were being listed, because I assumed that was a hidden property down there, but it's not a hidden property. I think it would only take a couple of minutes to just outline what we're talking about when we get these maps. So we're pouring order in, and they don't have anything to do with what's in the document that we presented. I don't think this is the first time it's happened.
Thirsty. Thirsty. Okay, Ed, do you want to add any language to that?
No, I assume, I assume what you've done is just affirm the planning commission, so there will be a notice of the final order that goes out, and it will be the planning commission's decision unchanged.
And I'd like to thank the parties for coming and the courtesy extended to each.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a short break?
Yeah, let's take a short break, maybe five after nine, maybe about eight or nine minutes. Two, item six, Commissioner, it's a resolution, Commissioner Porter, number 97-106.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, report 97-106 is a storm line correction at 12 and John Andrews, a bid award. This is something I think you're, I know you're very familiar with, we all are, and I think the prop owners, we thank the prop owners for their persistence and follow-through and their constructive participation on how to resolve this problem. I am pleased to say that during the budget process, as identified, I think we all saw some significant shortfalls in our ability to correct a lot of storm water issues. However, after your direction and strong indication to us that you thought the right thing to do was to work hard with the Cromers to resolve the problem, we have done that. We've identified to our storm water master plan, our sanitary sewer plan, that this project should be corrected. We issued a request for proposals, you have it before tonight, and we are requesting that you authorize us to accept a little bid that will correct the problem that has been identified to you in the past. So with that, I would like to say, I think the report mentions that, that being there's some timing issues, that we're requesting that this be declared an emergency. The counselors helped us instruct some information, authorizing us to waive some of this. We waived, we did, we received three proposals.
All right. Any questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Neely?
First of all, I do want to cap all this up, and I'll move ahead of this, and I do know that some colleagues, Commissioner Eddie Alley, also looked at that piece of property and they're all concerned about it. I do have one concern on the low bid. And I think we should, maybe the staff should take some time to discuss that little bid, because what I did notice there is that, quite a discrepancy, but what I did notice on that little bid, it's just barely underwrote, was identified as contingency in the storm rate budget. And my concern would be that the person, the people that made that bid would not provide any information of the people that performed the high bid for it.
Could that be answered?
I can only address to you that, I thought I was... I can only say to you that the low bid is a reputable company that had the same information that all of them had available to them. Also, I'll mention to you, one of the reasons we're able, with your direction, and again, with the Cromer's assistance to get this thing done, was that we've identified other funding sources other than storm water to repair this. We will be using, through our sanitary sewer master plan, if you recall, several years ago, we adopted a, we talked, you hear INI, which is, I've learned, it's inflow, infiltration. It makes a lot more sense for us to remove products from our sanitary sewer than to increase the capacity of our plant. This is an expense, a legitimate expense that has been identified in our master plan, so be paid for out of our sanitary sewer fund, which is quite a bit better off than our, it's a lot better off than what our storm water plan is. So they all had the same information available, and the low bid, I think, was just that, was a low bid. And one of the reasons that we're asking them quickly on it, because it's timing, this one company can be mobilized, this fits their work schedule. And as you know, now there's a lot of work out there, and part of the problem about getting low bids, and we're pleased to see that, is there's so much work out there that it's tough to get people to respond, which we did in this case.
It sounds like we've had experience with this company, a lot of experience with this company.
We had positive experience. I don't know about a lot of experience. We've had a positive experience in the past.
And the other query, I guess, and you may be getting to it, is that you provide us the memo, I think, that you just put on our, before us here this evening. I haven't really, I've gone too quickly, but I haven't already had a chance to touch this. Does any of the information that you're referring to here as to, there are apparently many places where there are apparently bad pipes and stormwater, does any of this have impact on what the price would be? That is, would have the bidders been aware of these problems? Are the problems such that they couldn't be addressed in the bid, or that something couldn't be worked out?
The bidders, the only knowledge they would have had of it was what knowledge, how familiar they were with our master plans. If they would have taken the time to look at our, some of our master plans, they would have had more advantage. We did not discuss any of the other issues with them. This issue, we felt, was clear enough, we could bring it to some quick resolution under this scenario.
I don't know if I was saying, my self-part is referring specifically to this memo. That this, yeah, that we just had a memo here. Is this, actually, it's the sixth of June, September 6th, so it probably wasn't issued.
Was this implied to the bid?
Yeah, was it? Thank you. That's what I wanted to say. Yeah, do the people, the people who did bid, do they see this?
It's a public document, but it was not part of the bid information. This was just internal information preparation of staff report. But it's, all this material was available to anybody, it's public information.
But it, I mean, it was a...
It would have been available if someone had requested it specifically.
Any questions? Is there a motion or...
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to adopt resolution number 97-36, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the most bidder, L. Hells, excavating an amount of $34,000, $100.
I second the motion, because there has to be an motion declaration, I understand.
It's in, it's in the resolution.
Okay. Second, moved in, seconded, any further discussion?
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Mayor Powell.
Aye. I'd too like to thank staff for working to get that resolved, and the party effective.
Let me make one point, I don't want to belabor it, that we wouldn't have been able to proceed in this scenario if you and the Cromers wouldn't have kept, allowed us to continue to do it. It's because you're, you made us do it.
So, next, we have an addition. Do you want to take 6A prior to 7?
I'd like to just do 6A if you don't mind. It's a housekeeping ordinance.
Our commission report number 97-113.
Mayor Commissioners, we had an add-on 6A. It truly is a housekeeping issue. It re-adopts the budget for 97, 98 after, as you know, the impacts of Measure 50 are still unknown. When we adopted it, there were a few things that were still refinement. The city, the county assessor has extended the filing date to August 15th, and what this really does is lowers the amount of, by $11,000 that we can levy. It's our full amount that we can levy, we just need to refile our resolution.
Any other questions? Any questions? Is there a motion?
I would, turn my mic on. I would move to read the resolution number 97-32.
As amended.
As amended.
Seconded. It's been moved in, seconded, any further discussion? Harry, 9, Gene?
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Mayor Powell.
Aye. Our next report is 97-112.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, report 97-112, subject is disposal fee pass through for yard debris increase. I'll give you a brief history of what this is about, so it's not too confusing. As you may or may not know, and I think it's probably time that we can bring it for you in near future, the cities of Westland, Gladstone, and Oregon City jointly through an intergrom agreement, ORS 190, operate and are responsible for a yard, what's referred to as River Cities Recycling Facility, I believe is the proper name. What we've done with that, by operating that over the years, we've been able to keep the cost of disposing of yard debris down low as possible, and I think you'll hear many, many times, it's probably one of the models in the area, in fact, a lot of people have used it. It lowered, it has lowered and kept trucking costs down because our franchise people don't have to travel the distance as much. Because of that, they have been able to keep our, some of our yard debris at a minimum. What's happened over the past several months, the three cities, and I'll say the River Cities Group, which is the advisory group, myself, the city administrator from Gladstone, and the city administrator from Westland, with our person that operates the facility, has determined that we need to increase our tipping fee to our, to the people that dump off, which is, for the most part, Oregon City Garbage Company, by 20%, I believe is what the number was. That pass-through, the Garden City Garbage Company tonight is asking that that pass-through be approved and be added to the garbage rate. In Oregon City, I'll speak to specifically, and each person's residential garbage rate, and most of them, is built into, into your garbage rates, built into the disposal of yard debris. It's been a very successful program. And for what that means is, to the average homeowner, I tried to do it, it's a little bit over, but it's about a 1% increase, or 20, I think it's about 20 cent increase per month. About 20 cent increase per month for yard debris is what the, is what the request is. Estel Harland's here tonight to talk about any specifics you have. The right, their franchise, this is not, we're not talking about solid waste tonight, we're talking specifically yard debris. We, again, it's been a very positive experience for all of us, and I think for everybody involved in it, and the request seems reasonable to us. Under the franchise agreement, the company is allowed to pass through those types of expenses on, and you can, you have a decision tonight.
I have a question of you, Charlie, and I'll let Esther come forward. Because we, the three cities, are in effect initiating the increase that's precipitating this request, could you explain why we're asking for the increase at the, at the site?
The increase is needed for us currently, in the past, when we first started this up, through cooperation of not only the three cities, but through Oregon City Garbage Company, some of the other haulers that have hauled stuff in, the paper mills, and loam this equipment to process material. It's become so successful that we, we in the past now have actually purchased a, I don't know what you call it, it's a front end, it's a big catapult, lifts up, front end loader, I think that's what it is called. But we actually pay, are buying one of those. We're just a little bit negative cash flow, and our, your direction in the past has been not to make money, but not to lose money. This 20 cents increase is straight up half of the request, and it can keep us, our cash flow neutral.
So it's to, really to buy equipment to keep the facility operating?
And it means, being it has been so successful, and we hope to continue it, it also means that there's part-time employees that are being paid out of it, there's been minor raises in those. Insurance, we recognize it, our insurance has increased, but it goes directly toward the operation, and there is no cash reserves being built at all.
Any questions, Charlie?
Charlie, that's 20 cents per month for the yard debris portion, or the entire garbage collection bill?
Your most residential customers will see a 20 cent per month increase in, on their garbage bill.
Thank you, I just wanted to throw that out.
A part of their bill is yard bill.
Yeah. I would just pose a question, if there's anything in our understanding of rate review committee, I present a map because it's a complete garbage building, is there anything that our rate review committee should be reviewing on this?
These cases, I believe not, being it's, it's actually a cost of pass-through.
I'm Estel Harland, Harland Business Consultants, Inc., and I've represented Oregon City Garbage Company for a long time. I think maybe something that might assist you is, I did prepare what the current rates are, and so you can see exactly what the, it is the 20 cents that is mentioned. The one exception is the monthly rate. Those who have monthly service don't have yard debris service, and that's consistent with the county. If they have, if they have once a month service, right, they don't get yard debris service unless they subscribe to it, and there is a provision for subscribing to yard, to yard debris service. And, but all of the other rates would go up by 20 cents a month per can. So if you have two cans, it'd actually go up 40 cents. And I think another important distinction is that Oregon City Garbage Company doesn't get any richer by this, this increase. This all is directly a pass-through for the disposal of yard debris. And a further bit of history is that our last rate adjustment was in May of 1992. So this company is operating very efficiently. We came in in May of 1994, and you approved roller cart service, the 35-gallon roller carts. We did it at the same price as we were doing the cans, but there was no rate increase, it was just if you want a roller cart, we'll do it for the same price. So that was an additional service, no rate increase. So for five years, we've had no rate adjustment. This year, in fact, on May 9th, I wrote to city manager saying, we know that you've probably heard about the metro disposal decrease.
I was going to ask you about that.
Yes, let me bring it up to you first, all right? On July 10th, metro decreased disposal by $5 a ton. And that amounted, based on the amount of tons that Oregon City Garbage disposals, disposes of at the metro facilities, that's about a 2% decrease in their operating costs. We had wage increases alone that increased more than the 2%. We, all costs have gone up in excess of the 2%. If we looked at all operating costs, not all of them went up, the 2%, but if you take the accumulation, our costs increased more than the 2%. However, as I indicated on the May 9th letter to your city manager, we would have been asking for our rate increase if it were not for this disposal decrease. We think that we're going to just about break even, we're going to be just a little bit below the 10% operating margin that the county and that all the others use as an industry standard. It was after that letter that I wrote on May 9th that we learned of this disposal increase for yard debris. We simply can't assimilate it into our current operating margin, and that's why we're here tonight, is to ask for this increase. And I think that that covers it.
Any questions, Mr. Trump?
How does this impact the, or does it impact the contract we have with the city? And if so, how much, can we quantify that? And if so, how much, can we quantify that?
You mean, you mean the franchise fee?
No, do we have, do we not have, I'm just curious, do we not have a contract with?
You have a franchise, we are franchising you by ordinance.
Okay, so this, and the franchise fee, part of that franchise fee is, is a contract that you will do garbage pickup downtown, and the city facilities, and things like that, so that's part of the franchise fee? Thank you. I do have another question about that, but after this, because it doesn't necessarily...
Anything? I would go ahead and move that resolution like seven thirty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Mayor Fowler.
Aye.
I have another question, as you go back to that franchise fee contract that we have, my understanding is that we are contracted to pick up trash downtown in Carnegie Center and things like that. My understanding is, and through, I've had a lot of complaints, that Carnegie Center is not getting dumped on a daily basis, which means that, and there's a lot of activity down there, and debris is everywhere. And I had a request whether, and whether we, you know, if you could take that back, to mention that we, I'd like to get back on a daily service if we aren't on a daily service, or get a larger trash unit, because it is a mess every morning when I drive down there, and I pass that quite often, and it really is something I think we need to look at.
Okay, I'll surely take that back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that, though, because I mentioned this directly. Part of the problem is that the garbage cans holes are not big enough. It's not the case that, of course, after our Thursday night concerts, they fill up, but somebody puts something in there, blocks the hole, and everybody piles stuff on it, and I pick those things up and find them, you know, two or three empty, and then, and so I think we need different containers down there, and I wasn't aware that actually Oregon City Garbage Act gave me the pickups there, or it was parks.
Okay. Very good.
I'll carry it back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The, we were actually pointing this, but I know there's people stuck around before this, I'd like to at least, and Commissioner Neely, you had a couple of questions, I think, on Fairway Downs, our commission report number ninety-seven eleven. Just for your information, just in case anything that a comment might be made while entering discussions, I think it's important at least have a little bit of a discussion about this tonight.
Can I mention, then following that, I'd like to add the second reading of the street vacation, for some of the people over here, they're asking when was good the other? It's not on your agenda, it's after, following this, I'd like to talk about ninety-seven dash one one four.
Okay, let's do this, and then one one four, and then we'll do this. Okay.
Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you had, or meet what we had. Our intent tonight was, one reason, it's under recommendation to the commission, was that we did not expect a big action. It was an opportunity, bringing back information you asked us several months ago to do, there was, we had a work session back at some point, then you had a commission meeting that talked about alternatives, and I believe Commissioner Lynch is the one that surfaced the main question. I think the original proposal, there was an issue either this, these areas that were hard to serve, or unserved by us, either they could be served by Clackamas River Water District, or I think the report talked about a booster pump of five hundred G P O, I'm not sure of that, but something like that. He identified that five hundred gallons per minute was not adequate, it should be a million thousand. We were told to come back, could you do a thousand, and that's really kind of information tonight.
Shows that it's feasible, it's a big question.
We did not expect you to, other than just some information, do any action tonight on this. Since this one out, Robert Randall representatives and us have may find future, may be able to resolve this a little bit differently. And I think it'll be all same resolution. But I'd be happy to answer any questions specific to this.
Let's start, Commissioner Neely. First of all, I'm glad it's been told, neither of us, Commissioner Lynch, of course, addressed before any questions. It seemed to me that the issue also, whether this water district could meet the specifications of the city. If it could, that might be a still possible alternative. And I guess my query was, or will be perhaps, as I should phrase it, is can Clackamas Water District meet the city's, city standards? And secondly, whether the ninety-five thousand dollars that's indicated here would be ninety-five thousand dollars more in terms of cost, I presume that the developer will have to pay over what would be paid if Clackamas Water District provided the service.
Any, anybody's, I don't know.
The answer is, yeah, if it's, if they were allowed by the city commission to hook to Clackamas Water, there would probably be no, very little cost. What they have wanted to do is, through this, and why we brought it to you, the other way to do this is to authorize staff to let them, you know, build the booster pumps for ninety-five thousand dollars, which would be an additional cost. But in either case, one thing I wanted to make very clear is, there's no cost to any residents in the area. And the one issue, the reason Randall sent a letter said, look, we'd like to wait till the twentieth to talk about this, is that although I think they agree to the ninety-five thousand dollars, they don't like the idea of paying maintenance.
Well, there's other issues that we've talked about other than that. And the bottom line is, it doesn't make any difference if Robert, you know, if Robert Randall's got a hundred thousand dollars, they're not going to take it out of their rainy day fund, they're going to pass it on to consumers, so they're not going to need that. So ultimately, anybody that lives in that subdivision is going to be passed on to them, whether, they're going to do that.
The new ones.
The new ones, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have to absorb it, they're not gonna need, that's cost of doing business.
And the pressure, though, would be increased for all?
Could, it could.
If it's, if it's connected to Clackamas River Water District, then I think the answer's yes. I think these, I'm not, the booster pumps were for the future phases to make sure that the water didn't drop any lower, but it has, I mean, the minimum was a thousand gallons per minute to maintain fire flows.
Part of the negotiations, generally speaking, is if we took a little bit larger, Commissioner Neely said, talked about, there'll be two, there's two questions right now, for the most part. Generally, can Clackamas Water meet our standards for delivery of water quality, volume, and our standards? That's going to be a question. I think we can answer that, but that'll be a question that'll come back, that you'll decide whether they do or not. Or this plan B would, or another plan would be this pump issue, whatever you all feel is the right thing to do. But there might be some way, under this scenario, that more than, that some of the existing, we may be able to take advantage of outside this area, that makes sense, we might participate into it, if it's a significant savings to us. That's the main reason for us not go on any for tonight, other than just general discussion. Because maybe, we may be able to capitalize on, for example, there's a period of time when it will, ultimately, we will have a reservoir out in that area. This equipment is still, it may be only five years old, it may have a substantial value to us. That's what we're looking at now.
Let me, it's another topic here, and those people stuck around, obviously, you're hearing what we're talking about. Are there any specific questions that you'd like to ask, or make sure that we ask, and have clarification when we bring this back?
I would just like to know if our flow rate...
Yeah, give us your name, address, if we could, and then we'll just get your questions, and we'll try to...
Anthony McEwen, one five zero four five Homestead Drive, right on the end of, where phase three is being put in, right next to the pump station that Clackamas River District is at. I was just really concerned with our flow, I don't believe we have a thousand pounds at the pumps right now. I just, I think we're in a downturn slide right now, and everybody's feeling the pressure. We just kind of want to get a little bit more input, because everybody, we talked to the city, and they're all playing brain-dead to us, well, it's all political games, we don't know what's going on.
I don't think it's political game, we're trying to get...
Well, they said there's a lot of politics involved, and that they didn't have an answer for us, and everybody in the neighborhood is just getting really discouraged. We're doing more water waste, just getting the hot water because of our flow than anything else.
The only question we have of this would be helpful, I'll talk about, some of the folks are outside the city limits. Are you in the city limits?
I'm in the city limits.
Thank you, I think all of these, one and two.
Fairway Downs, the first section, one and two, I don't know if they've been annexed in or not.
Those three mountains you're talking about.
That's what I meant.
Three mountains is...
They're out. Part of the, when you talk to, there's two issues. The fire, when I meant, thousand gallons a minute is flow, not pressure. Optimally, a working water pressure for this area should be twenty pounds, according to state health law.
But when are the flow tests taken?
Our goal is forty pounds. And I can't answer, but those are issues that we can, our public works, and I would hate to have anyone here tell you that they're political, they're not political, it's policy questions that these people decide on. I have not said that in a while, I'll say that, it's policy questions purely. If we're available, our public works department, if you're in the city, is available, come out and test any of your, your homes for residual static working pressure at any time. We've found many times, simply, in fact, I think we found one in Fairway Downs, I'm not sure a part of it was, that they, there was an installation meter, at the meter, that the meter wasn't, was blocked, wasn't even turned on all the way. So maybe simple solutions. But I would invite you to call our public works department, and if you get a negative response from them, I invite you to call me, and they'll be out there checking.
Because when we were original, on our property, we were told that a pump station was coming.
I can't address that tonight without...
My name's Jim Martin, I live at one five zero three five Pebble Beach, and the first time I called the city water bureau to complain about the water pressure in the area, the gentleman I talked to says, oh yeah, you're good at it, you're the ones with all the flow and no pressure. And so the city water bureau has been aware of the problem. The whole area there is not up to what I would call standard. I've had better water pressure in every house I've lived in before this area. It's getting to the point now that when my sprinkler system goes on in the evening, and I turn the water on in the house, I can tell the difference. And I'm afraid that when they build these new houses down there, I'm not going to have any water pressure at all.
Well, and that's specifically the reason why we have said there will be no further development until we, until this question's answered, to our satisfaction.
They've, that's right, I mean, we're, we've said, no, I mean, they've had certain approvals already, but we've said no, until this, so we're kind of forcing their hand a little bit to get this fixed.
Doug Rainey, one five zero two seven Pebble Beach Drive, and that's in Fairway Downs.
You know where it's Pebble Beach in... They have lightning.
Anyway, we moved into our home in September, and we were told, not by a city official or anyone, but we were told that there won't be any more houses built on phase three, ours is in phase two, until the water pressure correct, is corrected. I don't know who, what water district we're in, all I know is we pay our bill to the city of Oregon City, and we have very low pressure. I didn't even know for sure that it was Randall who's doing the development, but they're developing out there now, they've got the streets partially in, they've got all the drain sewers, they got the curbs in. Somebody had told me that they're not going to be building any houses until they put the water pressure up to where it's supposed to be. I hope, I hope that's the case, but, you know, somewhere along the line, now my wife, pardon me, my wife called the city engineer on three separate occasions, not too long after we moved in there, to inquire about the water pressure situation. All three times, she got the answering machine, left a message, never one time did she receive an answer back. I don't know why that is. The city engineer apparently is not here, so he, you know, but she was trying to contact the city engineer relative to this, to no avail. So all I know is that we have very low pressure, I certainly hope we don't have any more homes out there to make it lower still.
Let me add, first off, if you have any water-related pressures right now, currently out, the phone call is to Public Works, Rick McClung, and they can come out and take a look at your area.
I don't take mine any worse than anybody else in the neighborhood.
That's him.
That's him right there. If they fail to respond, call me, and I'll drive him out there.
He should be able to come out there, I know.
I think he will.
He will. We just hired a new city engineer, Mendez, also.
Well, actually, I'd like, I'd like to take advantage of this segue and say that we, the new city engineer started yesterday, and Bob Coulson is sitting in the back of the room, and he does return phone calls.
This is part of this...
I don't know the name of the man she called.
She, we do. She called.
Some of the resolution to your problems, though, is what we're talking about, what you, what the commissions ask, this pumping station or Clackamas River Water should mitigate any problem you have, it won't, it won't compound any problem you have. In fact, what we hope is it may help with some of the problems. I don't want to overstate it, again, the minimum water pressure at a home, the state health degree is twenty pounds, whether you like twenty pounds of water pressure is, is twenty pounds. Our goal for the city policy is forty pounds. Twenty pounds is not a lot, but it's, it's operating safe level.
That very reason is why we're having this discussion with this developer.
But we didn't pay a hundred seventy thousand dollars to have thirty pounds of water pressure either.
And I guess the question...
Whoa, 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 we're gonna stop right there, this man's the microphone, go ahead.
I'm Russ Bailey, I also live on Pebble Beach Drive, one five oh three one. One comment that I, maybe I misunderstood, but I'd like to clarify, and that is, your negotiation with the developer right now is for pump station for future development. Well, I, that bothers me quite a bit, frankly. I think any, any water pressure or water decision should involve all the citizens, not just future development, so. I, I, that, that comment does bother me.
Well, let me, let me clarify, and what I was saying is, that what we told the developer was, there would be no future development until this issue was settled. Okay? And I didn't say that it would not affect the existing residents, what I'd like to do is come back at the next meeting and be able to explain if there is any benefit to this to you or not. I can't answer that at the moment. All we have, we have told simply, Robert Randall, you will build not one more house until this water situation is dealt with.
Could I clarify something with Rich, because he's made that comment? My understanding is the issue of whether it would be Clackamas Water District, or whether we would do something, if it was Clackamas Water District, additional housing would have no impact upon the pressure and existing, the future housing would have no impact on the, on the current housing, because it'd be a different water line coming in, is that correct?
If it, in terms of Clackamas River?
Clackamas, please, Clackamas Water District. Yeah, Clackamas Water District. If they would provide the service, then it would have no impact on the water pressure on the existing houses, is that correct?
My understanding would be that it would, if we were able to provide the service, it would benefit everybody.
No, that's, that's true, but I want to make sure...
I mean, in terms of the water pressure, it would benefit not only future homes, but the existing homes.
Well, you were exploring with us the possibility of Clackamas Water District providing that water instead of us, that if they provided it, it would have no negative impact on the existing housing there.
Okay.
Because it would have no pressure.
No negative impact.
Is that right?
That's my understanding also.
Okay. Now, the issue before us is, we have a better, we have a better solution.
That's what we're trying to, and that's information, I think, that's three thousand gallons a minute, a thousand gallon a minute pump versus five hundred, which we originally had talked about.
And I'm interested in both flow and pressure.
Exactly. And that does, this brings a dark goal known for...
To raise it up, that's right. I, I think there's a solution out there, we can't be as specific as we will be next, the next meeting. Ma'am?
My name is Sheila Hockinson, and I live at two zero zero five six Torrey Pines Drive, and I'm part of the first phase. So I've been there probably a lot longer than some of my neighbors, and I've watched my water pressure go from being able to have a sprinkler in the backyard, and a sprinkler in the front yard, and be able to have adequate water pressure to only have to move the sprinkler in the backyard maybe three or four times. My backyard is fairly large, that's, I know why a lot of people in our development move there, because the lot sizes are fairly large. You're not living in a tract five thousand square foot lot development. The problem that I see is, this was phased and developed to be a large, numerous phase development with what seems like to us residents who came in and paid, a lot of us in the first phase, under the understanding that the water pressure was lower due to... A lot of us in the first phase under the understanding that the water pressure was lower due to, it was turned down, and when future phases came in, they would accommodate by turning it up and not use the full potential of it right off the bat. And whether that was a false portrayal from the realtors that were involved with the Randall phasing, and some of the other people within the Randall building development, that's neither here nor there. But what we all came in understanding was this was a big phase, it was a problem, but it was going, they knew what was going on, and it was going to be rectified. Now, I've lived at my residence for over a year, and I know a lot of new people are just getting to their year point, and as new people move into phase two, and phase two is almost done, we are coming up against, in the evening, if you turn on your water and five neighbors have their water on, you might as well turn it back off. Because there's no way you're going to water your front and backyard. There's no way your neighbor's going to do their laundry, and there's no way the neighbors over in phase two are going to do anything. So I guess what we don't understand as a community is why Randall Development came in, did all this phasing, it all got approved, knowing how many houses, how many people were going to live there, with not taking better preparation to solve these kind of problems before they happened. How does a development like this, that's five, six phases, with house lots, houses, you know, two thousand square feet, obviously, you know, fourteen to two thousand in the first phase, and bigger and bigger as we go, obviously laid out for houses full of families, you know, moms, dads, kids, dogs, cats, to move in to, how did we get to the point where this is what we developed to get this kind of market placement into this development? And not look at, okay, we're in phase two, phase three started, there's no houses there, we already have a problem in phase two, why didn't this problem, why wasn't it solved before this development was ever approved? I sat here tonight and watched you guys debate about somebody getting an easement, or a driveway, or a road into a back parcel, and here we have, you know, four more phases of houses, you know, that's got you know how many lots, and we can't water our lawns. We paid enormous amount of money to have a nice house, to build it, then we put in lawns, then we put in fences, and now we're to the point where unless we sit down as a neighborhood co-op and figure out a watering schedule and laundry schedule, we're not going to be able to do what we need to do to live there. So what the question we want asked, or I want to ask, that I know my neighbors, who I'm representing on my side, both sides of me want to ask, is how does something like this slip through the cracks with this size of development and was not addressed upfront?
I, we'd be happy to address this, and I would strongly encourage you. My understanding is you have some type of neighborhood association.
No.
Hopefully you will. We have, we would love to be involved in, even prior to that, to be invited out to someone's home and come out and talk about these issues. I think in my mind is, how can we help resolve those issues? We're in this thing also with the city. Part of what we talk about here was doing just exactly that. How do we bring this to a stop, make sure that from now on, we recognize that there was an issue in these future phases? They, they may be doing street improvements, et cetera, but they're not going to issue any improvements until we, until, well, I don't think the commission is going to authorize anything until some of these, this criteria is met. That brings to that resolution here. Does it help you? It might, that's what I, my point was, our future discussion, we may be able to benefit from, we may, we, you might be able to benefit from this improvement, which was originally designed for the future phases, to help with your, your pressure problems, possibly. We would openly request that you invite us to come talk, if we can sit up here to talk about how we can bring some correction to that.
One quick question I have is if they were able to do either of these items that you guys have addressed tonight, that you're talking to Randall about, is that going to be adequate to get us enough pressure so I can put in a sprinkler system and my neighbor can put in a sprinkler system, which neither of us have enough pressure to run right now? And is it still going to provide enough pressure down the line that when we get into phase four, we aren't back right here where we are now in phase two?
I hate to say this, I'm going to give you the, it depends question, answer. What's, what was, the discussion before us is the future phases, how to provide adequate for future phases. It was not on how to correct the, the, the problem, the existing problems. I, I would just tell you that recognize if you have some problems, I think we need to clearly identify it through public work. I understand you do have problems. I think we need to sit down and discuss how it can be corrected. This proposal originally was to make sure that your system was not strained any further.
Okay, and I know it's, I mean, this obviously is pretty important to everybody, you know, where you would be here. We're not ignoring it. When the problem became, you know, aware to us, we directed staff to get solutions. I mean, yeah, it, something happened and it, and it got there, but we haven't buried our head in the sand, and we're not going to, we kind of draw a line, understand what the developer said, you know, you've got some issues to address and to get fixed, if you want to keep doing anything else. And the more they put in the roads and streets, the more pressure they put on themselves to get it fixed.
Hello, my name is Tim Corney, I live at 15044 Homestead Drive, and I just wanted to say, like the mayor, I'm interested in pressure and flow, because I, my bathrooms and showers are upstairs, and right now, if I turn on my shower upstairs, the water doesn't reach from one side of the shower to the other side from the shower head. And I have called city works, and they said, come to the meeting tonight, we're going to discuss it. So that's why I'm here. So I'll let you know how, what they said the pressure in my house is when they come out and check the water.
When we, Rick, when we check pressure, do we take the highest point in the house? Or at the meter there? What's the state standard of meter, is there a state standard?
Generally, it has to be enough.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Farthest, farthest point from the meter is required is pressure.
But this, our pressure is, is in elevation, doesn't make any difference, it's elevation is the problem. I mean, it's, the head pressure is half pound foot, basically, so the higher the building, the less.
Right.
The more pressure takes to get up to it.
Anyway, I'm just thinking if we haven't been typically, to get our twenty pounds or forty pounds or thirty pounds, we might want to get permission to test at a second full shot.
I know twenty pounds does not seem like a lot, it is not a lot.
Jim Imper, I live at 15022 Pebble Beach Drive. I think we're all aware of the fact that we have low pressures, but I think the, the main problem here is getting the problem resolved. The Glen Oak area's been a, a low pressure area for five, six years. I know that, that time Claremont Water District had made proposals to the city of Oregon City on helping to correct the problem. Nothing was ever transpired on that. I know a year ago, the city of Oregon City, Robert Randall, and Clackamas River, after it was reformed, had a meeting to discuss the home, and that was a year ago, nothing's been resolved. I think what we're concerned about here is have, we have a problem, we've got to get it resolved, and we've got to get it resolved now. Talking with the variant water district, because that's kind of my business, the Clackamas River can service that area, the Glen Oak area, I know they can do it, I've been trying to propose it, I've proposed it for years, with a very simple readjustment of their system. And as far as water quality goes, both city of Oregon City and Clackamas River South, which is the old Claremont, is both serviced by South Fork Water Board, it's the same water. So I think the worst, easiest case that I can see is obviously go with the Clackamas River. I don't want to let Randall off the hook, because I know Randall has been dragging the feet for a lot of time now, and I'd still like to give something at it, you know, at some point, but I think the whole key is to get the problem resolved as quickly as possible, and not let this thing drag on farther and farther down the road.
Thanks.
You know, and that, and that's a good point. That was exactly what we, you debated, was it's a policy question about Clackamas River water or Randall. I will say, at this point, while the Randall corporate has been very quiet, they, they want resolution to this, because they know that you are not going to allow issues of developments to have satisfactory resolution to these future phases, and they also know their credibility for past is on the line too. They're going to participate. I really believe that. I think, I think relationship has improved over the past months on how this is going to happen. It's a good business sense for them, and it's a good business sense for us to, to help with the testing.
So let me just say, I mean, I, I get it, you know, I get a pretty good sense of the crowd here, but what, tell me what your intentions are, Charlie, pulling this tonight, and then tell us where we're going with this in terms of stuff.
I think bringing back the, and we'll do our best, if people want to be notified that night that you talk about that, we maybe, I don't know how we can do that.
Do you anticipate it at the next meeting, or?
I can't answer that.
Yeah.
It just depends on what issues we have before you, but we're going to bring back the policy off questions.
Yeah. Do you have a?
About Clackamas River water or boost.
How, obviously, you talked, you're here.
This is our leader right here.
Is your neighborhood organizer, organizer leader officially or not? I mean, can we contact someone that can, that can spread the news? Or can we get a sign-up sheet as they leave, and we'll make an attempt to get, you know, several people to fight?
I don't see a reason why we couldn't bring this back to the next meeting on August the twentieth for discussion. We, we basically laid out the pump option in terms of dollars. The question that everybody wants answered is, you know, will this pump?
I'm hesitant to tell you the twentieth tonight, because I don't want people to make their schedule, and come and find out that we're not prepared to talk about it.
If, if we could maybe just get a sheet of paper, and when we, even on the table out there, as you folks leave, if you want to be, if that's, you know.
We'll do our best to notify.
You know, let you know, the postcard or something. The other thing is, I'd like to know, because there's some discussion, is the solutions or these pumps, what does it do to the existing phase? I think that's really critical. And if there's going to be a willing participation by either us or Randall to address any of the existing phase, I think that's very.
One, one of the items is, I mean, this pump is an interim solution.
Right.
I mean, period. We either, the long-term solution is the city provides the water through some other method, or Clackamas River water provides the water. And we, we need to make that decision.
Your master plan, our master plan shows ultimately what's happened exactly. In fact, you're carrying through it. The reservoir on, off of Glen Oak, back, I can't remember what.
Danny Court.
Near Danny Court, is one element of ultimately the, the tank, that's a capacity tank. If the folks here don't know, we hoped identified in our master plan, in that general area, and I think identified in our six-year plan, was to build an elevated tank to get the pressure to fill that zone. That is in our plan, that's one reason when you move into the city and you pay water STCs, that's going in, that STC that you paid for your home is going in the bank to build the water as well. But it's part of the plan, so it is temporary solution.
Okay. If, I think Rick's putting a piece of paper out there and a pen, if you'd like to notify of the meeting that we'll address this, please give us your name and address.
We'll try for the twentieth, but I'd hate to tell you for sure that's it.
Right. Put a star by your name. No, I'm just kidding. Do you have a good question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say that I may well not be live six years from now, for waiting that long.
Yeah, well, this interim solution, yeah, I think what he meant is it's maybe not, you know, not the, it's a lot, it's not the last thing we're doing, but it's going to make it better. And it's a real concern of ours, you know, you talk about watering your lawn, you know, heaven forbid there's ever a fire. That's what we're, that's the testing, you know, that really got us going is fire flow. And that's why pressure's important, but.
Paying real good tax money over there, and we deserve what we pay for. I'm just, this has been bugging me ever since I moved in.
And you're not going, you're not, it's not falling on deaf ears, okay?
Because I'm right, I'm right next door to phase three, and these guys are ready to put pavement down.
Well, they might pave it, but they're not going to hammer any nails. Okay?
They're going to put pipes.
They might put pipes, but not going to hammer any nails. Rich, can you check to see about the blank note versus, but sign up too, I mean, you know, let's see what we can do. Okay, we've got a couple of items.
Can't talk to the ordinance now, I forgot.
Uh, we're going to go to 114?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
You bet.
The next item we're going to address tonight is commission report number ninety-seven one fourteen.
Mayor Commissioners, report ninety-seven dash one fourteen is an ordinance vacating a portion of the alley. This was before you at your July meeting, there was discussion, comments made, and commission decision was three one, and as you know, when it's not unanimous decision, the second reading's held over. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I will mention to you, there was more than one comment raised. Commissioner Lynch raised some question during the first reading, the first discussion of it, in regards to access, about police, fire access, et cetera. I had, since that time, I have followed up again with the police department and the fire department vote. They believe that, at this point, that there is not a negative effect by vacating the alley, if you so, whatever decision is. Their concern is future development, as we know, the city attorneys told us, and if the property owners decide to do something of the future, partition, et cetera, if access is required, we will, we could rededicate it back at that point. So we are not concerned, as far as the fire department, police department are concerned anyway. That question, they don't have a problem with the vacation, as it states now. This is second reading.
All right. I would, I have a little concern here. I mean, we have a negative vote cast by persons not here. I would prefer to see this deferred. If it's not deferred, I've got some questions raised on it at this point, but I would prefer to see it deferred, and I will make a motion that we defer to the next meeting, because the negative vote was cast by persons not here.
Is there a second? Sounds like we're going to be hearing this.
Well, I will, I will query something now, because will, the, the access to the properties appears to be the private drives. For emergency vehicles to get to, to the properties, it's the private drives of those that would prevent emergency access.
Yes.
Okay. What is to prevent the residents from locking up those, those driveways so that emergency vehicles could get in? And what potential, in fact, that may that have neighboring properties to?
Any restriction to property has a negative impact as far as fire response, but I guess the answer, I guess the property that locks, property that wants is common. There's lock communities, lock gates, lock houses all the time, we just bust their doors in. Locks don't stop fire department or police department.
I guess, I guess my question probably would be with the councils.
That, can someone lock it?
Can, can, is there anything we can do in, in this reading that would essentially prevent the, the driveways from being blocked by the residents?
If you vacate the, the public easement, the right to block that easement goes to those people who, you know, where the underlying property owns, from whom it came. I don't think you can condition a vacation, you either got to do it or not do it. If you vacate, they can put up a gate, and, they can put up a gate, and, and except for emergency circumstances where they can bust through, and they can make it stick.
Good question.
Could we, we, I know we have had vacations before where we have, we have said that there's going to be a 20-foot or whatever easement allowed now.
You can retain that easement.
But we can't control if that easement is locked or if, if we say we want access to that easement at any time of the day.
If there is an easement left, you can do that. If you vacate it entirely, then you have no need to control it.
Right, that's, that I guess that's my question.
Right. Often, you know, you vacate a right-of-way and you keep the, the lines, the easements for the utilities.
Yeah. The, my, my question last week or whenever, last, last month or whenever this was, not so much in regards to the vacation and then the emergency access, although that does obviously relate, but it was more to just a concern about future development fitting into the, the area which typically had rear garages and access from those rear garages off of alleyways and not that that's the intent of the owners to do that now, but if it became such and that alleyway was vacated, it may force the development pattern to look to more, more towards front garages and access up center street to be more typical. But anyway, that's, that was something that I had raised, you know, last week that went off.
The access on the front of there is not, what it's like bluff.
Sure.
That's what happened.
So, you can't, uh.
Well, I can't take responsibility for permission of being here, I, I, the first time. The point is, there is no access, emergency access on the current alleyway handling and that happens. So since my first motion didn't do it, I will move the, for the second reading and enactment.
Okay, final adoption.
Final adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second.
Ordinance number 97-1021, ordinance vacating a portion of an alley in the planning Fields Edition, Oregon City Org.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Neale.
Aye.
Mayor Foulton.
I'm going to special go.
Are you more special? You're more special.
We need honor of Jack Lynch, maybe this shouldn't be him. Aye.
Do you think you do the same thing?
I know. Okay, that, that passed. Okay. Where in the world are we? Commission report number 97-109.
Direction of staff on amendments needed to facilitate reconstruction and expansion of facilities on Abernathy Road.
I'm looking for Tim.
What you have before you is a request on how to proceed with an interesting issue that we have, it's come up a couple of times and in this report, I've mentioned the Plaquenil County facilities that are located on the Abernathy Road. And their, their structures are actually located in two zones. One is light manufacturing and another one in, part of it is, no, it's actually all, M1 is light manufacturing, but part of their area is quasi-public in the compliance plan. And there's no correlation in our code that says what quasi-public is to the zone. So what, what makes this interesting is either they, I mean, there's a whole list of options that we passed over to Etton to review and his direction was either we change the conditional use process so that it does include governmental buildings, because right now it has all these governmental facilities, but it doesn't say buildings. Governmental utilities and stuff, but it doesn't say buildings. And it's left out and silent throughout the code. So it's not like it's shown in any one of, like, limited office. You could probably put governmental uses in office space, but it's silent. Now, another issue like that comes up, I spoke with the post office and they're looking to move a site to Malala Avenue. Same, same issue. What do you do with that? So we have governmental offices and right now there's no provision for that. And the only other option they would have is actually a zone change from M1 to actually CI, which is campus.
Industrial.
Industrial. So given the sticky wicket that we are in with ODOT at the intersections on 213, I think we'd be best to go with something that's text amendment and then go with, if they will pursue expansion at that facility, take it to conditional use.
Well, we might get the county to help build the roads. Change the.
This is true.
I don't want to put that as a condition.
Wishful thinking. Anyway, this was originally brought up to the planning commission on June 12th and as it states in the staff report. There's language in the comp plan that says governmental facilities are to be conditionally used in all zones, but it never was carried on into the text of the useful, meaningful code. So this would just enact.
This cleared the, the process. Please start it up. Questions by my fellow members? It seems the most reasonable approach.
I guess my concern is it's driving, not, not, not that it's a reasonable approach.
Yeah.
The issue that's driving is we've got building that's going, it's being planned in floodplain. And that's what's driving it. It's, and that is a concern of mine. I've listed another one, I'm sure everybody will come up with reasons why it should be a concern of mine, that why, why is it that we make an exception for government buildings and then we don't make an exception for other buildings? I mean, why there's a government building, I can see why it might be more essential if you're talking about a fire station or something, but it's not that clear if it's an office building, why it, it has a different standard in apartment office building, industry regard.
This is true, but in situations such as federal buildings and even though the post office is not quite a federal building, they're federal, but they're kind of disenfranchised from the federal government.
I do something to it, I'm sure the federal law comes in.
But they, they, they do say, you know, that it's a federal structure and because of that, the local land consolations don't apply. Wherever they choose to set it down. And so this actually does give us a process. If you want to, you could say, you know, this would be for governmental buildings that are federal only, but then that doesn't necessarily help out those other structures including ourselves.
I think we've actually made it harder for government buildings. I mean, if you're in a commercial zone, it says if you do this, 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 or this, you're there, you're home free, it's permitted use. Government buildings are, government offices are required to go through a conditional use process, which is a lot more difficult. And in terms of the post office, I'd like to post, point out, the post office is trying to get out of the floodplain. And is, and is having a problem doing it because they are a government office and have to go through these hoops.
Yeah, I mean, the point is what's being, the reason that this is coming forward is not the post office at all, it's because of that. That's a very, I understand what you're saying.
Even though I may share some of those thoughts, the, are they not grandfathered in at all down there?
For the structures, but, you know, the issue is, if they're going to make any changes to that, then they've got to come back to you.
That's true.
And there's limitations on what they can expand on grandfathered building.
I guess I'm wondering because I, I personally don't often see a building on a floodplain. That's what, that's what is driving this process. We're changing it, the fact that the post office may be able to get out of floodplain because of this, that's not what's driving this particular amendment, this specific issue. It isn't coming up because of somebody's rational thought, which should be generated cases, it's a specific issue and we're trying to accommodate something that I don't think should be accommodated personally.
And, and I'm surprised that they've carried it as far as they have with the floodplain. I think, you know, there are some other options that they could pursue, but it's hard to, to tell the county what to do, you know, they have a planning process and they have to ultimately hold them, I mean, we can at certain points, but they need to hold themselves accountable for some decisions and sometimes decisions cost more money if they're the right decision.
I have a question on the recommendation. It says, you know, direct staff begin a text amendment, conditional uses to permit government buildings in all, all zones within the city. And I have, I have a little concern about all zones, that, you know, I mean, I don't want to see them drop something in the middle of a neighborhood. And, and we have, you know, we've lost our ability and, and I know we wouldn't, I know that, that we can, we can manage that, I just actually.
That is a good point, yes.
And I prefer it.
Excluding residential.
Yeah, I think we ought to think about that and decide.
Commercial industrial.
Commercial industrial, maybe.
Or, and, and limited office or not, or, I don't know.
I mean, I wouldn't want to dump a sandlot up there, but on the other hand, I, I think campus industrial is something that they have to limit them to.
And maybe that can be something that in the process, the staff can talk about and come back and dialogue with the commission.
I feel more comfortable.
Because that does open up all those issues.
Right. However, don't forget that the Carnegie is a government building. Well, so are fire stations.
That's true, I understand. And, and there are certain needs for those types of buildings, but there's not necessarily a need for an office building in the middle of the Hill and Dale neighborhood.
Or a county maintenance shop.
Or a county maintenance shop, exactly.
So this doesn't necessarily set everything, gets it in motion if it's approved tonight, but some of those concerns that Tim was raising others, then could be dialogue.
Yes.
Absolutely. This just begins the process of dialogue and we'll go to the planning commission and then invite the city commission out and that would be public hearings and those would be notified.
It's a pleasure.
Well, I would, I would move that we direct staff, well, to, that we adopt report number 97-109 with comments.
Again, second, simply because the direction of staff and the members need to facilitate the reconstruction and expansion of Plaquenil's County facilities on Abernathy Road is why this is, I'm not saying a motion. Too bad you didn't phrase the subject there.
Just be honest.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion. Yeah, yeah, I'm a step down.
He stepped up, you stepped down. So we moved to second.
Commissioner Neale.
No.
Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Mayor Foulton.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have one, oh, well, maybe we're down to the premise. I'd like to, I'd like to at this time, just make one appointment to the planning commission. I do know that both Pauline Merrill's position and Mary Johnson's position, they've been concluded. I'd like to just, at this point, reappoint Mary Johnson to a new term on the commission.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you did get through more.
Oh, yeah, I know, that's why, that's why I'm waiting on this last one. Because there are, because there's other applicants and we had it in the talk of the town and I, I am not trying to at all delay the filling of the commission because they serve a vital role within the community, but I would like to be able to, to read these applicants, you can read and comment, those and the ones in the packet. And I want a chance to talk to these people and make the appointment, I think that's worth another few weeks. Charlie, if I could just mention just as a matter of personal, I don't know if it's in a policy anywhere, but just a personal preference in that oftentimes vacancies come up on various committees. And we put announcements in the talk of the town, various papers, we're doing it right now for mental enhancement and others. I think if a citizen of the, of the community wants to serve, they should be able to come in at any time and, and just turn in an application for that particular committee, whether there's a vacancy on it or not. And then when there is a vacancy, those can be flagged, they can, I can review them, they can call, are you still interested, are you not interested, or whatever. And I, and I think this was, and I will take this as a, as an innocent, honest mistake, but I think some people were told when they came in to apply that the timeframe to apply was over. And, and I don't know who, you know, I, I'm not, I think it was just an honest mistake, but I wanted to clarify what I presume to be kind of the process, that really anybody can apply for anything, anytime. Oftentimes we announce it that there's certain vacancies, that gives, that's the time to dialogue on people that are applying, gives me a chance to talk to the person that's currently sitting on the commission or committee, do they want to continue or not, doesn't mean they're going to be reappointed, but are they interested in being reappointed or not? And then trying to facilitate the best decision on the people. So again, I will say that it's criticism, but just as a point of clarification.
I'd like to follow up on that. The person in fact did apply, well, wanted to apply, came to the conference desk and said they were too late. And their application was based on a thing that used to be called Talk of Our Town and is called now Trail News that we have in the water bill. And it actually was the, it was this month's, one of his words for this month's water bill, August 1st. And there was no indication on that there was a deadline and if there were the July 31st deadline, it shouldn't have even been in the August Trails News.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I think we have, we got the point of that, the problem with it, I mean, our new Trail News is, that's the problem with, that's the reason a lot of the information in it is not good information because you have to write it out so far in advance, it's old information by the time we get it. We need a newspaper.
Yeah.
A local newspaper, weekly.
Okay.
One of the, one is that since this, this. Mary Evil Johnson to fill one position and I'm pulling the other position open, I'm already reading the other applications. Yeah. The other one, I'm going to wait.
What I wanted to say was that my understanding is the Talk of Our Town is actually funded out of the commission's budget, is that correct?
Through general fund, through, via your budget, that's correct.
Okay. I got this thing that has evolved from the Talk of the Town to the Talk of Our Town and now it's Trail News. Trail News doesn't do a thing for me. I don't know why these changes are occurring. It doesn't say it's our town, it could be any trail. Even if it's the Oregon Trail, it could be something that we're doing somewhere in Missouri. I mean, it doesn't, I personally didn't like it when I saw it and I was confused, I was tripped out of my, my water bill. That's maybe not a major thing, but we've had to go through three, three transitions in things and I'm not sure why that's even happened. I do have some other things here that are, are more specific to the commission's concerns. I believe it was a May, in May, Shaw Spady put forward requests, we moved and seconded that this request, which was at Parks and Recreation, look at a request that the city-owned properties in Newell Creek be designated as natural areas. Parks and Recreation has not received, at least had not received by its last meeting a formal request from the city to consider this. It's not that they aren't considering it, it has a formal amendment and they need a formal request, I believe. They have in fact a tour of the side, Shaw Spady has been there on two of their meetings, but this needs to be carried forward. And I want to bring that up. And I'm asking why actually Parks and Recreation weren't.
They have.
They say they have not, they have gotten no official notification to deal with it.
Why would they have taken the tour then?
Because Shaw Spady and I went to their meeting, but I was their academic ass to say.
Parks Committee took the tour, their, they will their next meeting evaluate what they set the term, come back with a report to commission via me on what they, their suggestions are.
I still state, there was no, there was no instructions to the Parks and Recreation Committee over the last two and a half months to deal with the problem. Shaw Spady and myself appear there as just individual citizens to push it, but the request wasn't coming from the city. It wasn't on their agenda, we asked it to be put on, on their agendas as individual I would also like to pursue two other things, both of which were addressed by Shaw Spady at that time. Apparently the condition put on Newell Creek apartments was to have. Apparently the condition put on Newell Creek apartments was to have land adjacent to the current site where construction's occurring. The corner between Highway two thirteen and Beaver Creek beaded to the city. That deed is not, to my knowledge, that deed, that deed is not, that eating has not occurred at this point. And I'm requesting that the city pursue this before those apartments are opened up. Construction is, is continuing on and those land apartments should be.
It has been beaded to the city. I have the document in my office.
Okay, good. And the third thing that she brought up, and I would like to request the city formally to pursue it, is to look at a conservation easement program to the attitude of municipal. Cole, Dan, you mentioned when this was brought up, that it'd be also not only, not only important in terms of general natural areas with addressing some of our issues that not only come up in the, in the South Basin, but other basin. So I think that will perhaps facilitate the dedication of land and I would like to see you become actively involved and turn that up beyond, beyond so involved at this time.
Let me, let me piggyback on that last one. What, what kind of a process would we need to establish in order to technically have a conservation easement program? Or is it a state law? Is it city? Is it, I mean, how does?
State law allows you to do it, does not require it. You'd have to amend your ordinances to provide for the program.
Is that, is, are there cities that have done that?
Yes.
To where the league of cities has information on it that we can review or?
Our hope was to bring that kind of information out of a discussion of planning type people specifically that. And evaluate what it meant to be back in ordinance form, what we're talking about for time allocation and resources. That's not been forgotten. Frankly, it's only been May twenty-first and that's a big, that's a big, it's not forgotten. That's a big issue to do it properly.
Is there, maybe, could you give us, I mean, a guess as to the timeframe that you think they might be able to look at?
I mean, I could not leave you, right? I, I think you understand everything else that's happening in the planning and engineering. Yeah, I get more, a lot more than that.
I think it's, I mean, I think it's worth mentioning that, one, the city is probably still at the highest level of development it's ever been at. And it is taxing on just the existing resources. The city has also undertaken probably, probably the most massive kind of planning programs. The city, since the city did a comprehensive plan, we're doing a capital improvement program, a transportation system plan, a regional center framework plan, Highway two thirteen core study. And I basically kind of run out of body, yeah, I mean, I basically run out of bodies as project managers. And these balls, I have regular jobs processing documents.
We understand it's important. We just haven't had the time or the, the resources to make it happen.
What I was wondering is, and I, I totally agree, you know, with what you're saying. But at the same time, we're busy with development is when you need that kind of a program because that's when people might be wanting to dedicate for storm ratings things to be able to take conservation easements and help with the taxes and lower our costs. You know, I mean, it's kind of how and why might work. That's why my question about.
In the next four weeks, we'll sit internally and develop a, some type of schedule for your memo and see if you like it, disagree with it, massage it. Give some ideas about our timing.
I'd like to point out that we did have somebody at the same time that Shaw Spady was here, a leader named Kathy Pierce. And the three, I agree with her, three really responsible, as is specifically dedicated to looking at issues about conservation easements.
Her name's logged as a resource.
Okay, so I, I mean, I don't.
She did, she did offer up her.
She offered up her services and I think we should avail, avail those ourselves under.
Good.
Another thing is that.
Not a role.
And, and I'm on a roll. Another thing was that, it was a few months ago that we saw something coming from Trimate. Jack Lynch responded to it dramatically because it wasn't very detailed in terms of new routing. We did get a more recent map. Now, I know Trimate has actually visited the Tower of Vista Neighborhood Association and the South Neighborhood Association presenting its plan, its routing. I, I, I listened to them. I did speak to them afterwards suggesting that it should also make the presentation in the city commission. And I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're working with you all, Rich. And I, I would like to see that as an agenda item for Trimate to come in and formally make the presentation for routing.
Because it was fairly good idea, but it'd be nice to see it.
Their route is going to go back in September. We, back to New Liars, they were brought by career to my house for the national might against Ariel Castle.
Yeah, I, I got, I got. I mean, it's, it's not that we would probably have a lot of input to change it now, but it.
No, no, I wasn't thinking, I, I was thinking also that at that point you could start to have some discussion as well as what, what we can do internally. In our limited transit system to somehow piggyback on that, some of the concerns for Jack, example, Jack Lynch was bringing out those very inadequate stories, which is true. Of Vulcan, the particle like scary. It's, it's just early morning, late evening, very remote abouts. We might be able to do something to piggyback with that or discuss with them if that's, that's an addition we need.
Maybe they could be asked to make a five-minute presentation in an open period of time or something. I think they'd be glad, would be glad to do it. But I also think at this point, the reason they'd be glad to do it is to market what they've already decided.
Yes, I agree. I understand, I understand. That's true.
I agree.
I understand that's true, but I, I guess, I think it's, first of all, I think it's because they went to the neighborhood association first. That was the right place to go. But I, I don't want to be a lockdown. The neighborhood association, they, they're probably better. But I wanted, the other thing I wanted to do and I wanted to put forward, I think we need work sessions in both the, the Urban Renewal Agency and the City Commission to start dealing with issues in terms of, in case of the urban, urban, the urban bonds, right? The Urban Renewal Agency bonds, how are we going to use that? How are we going to propose that we're going to use those numbers? And also in terms of getting work sessions and dealing with the issue of levies that we're going to have to deal with. I think we have to get upon it right away. I don't, I don't think we should wait for three months if we're going to do something in May, start off in three months. But I think we should start talking about what we need to do now.
Charlie, I know you've been obviously kicking around ideas at staff.
I can share what we're, what we intend to do. There are several issues. I agree a hundred percent on May, that general period. We need to do something, we have to do something. No question whatsoever. We have, and obviously remember this is the staff, well, the management team is actually, again, talked about this afternoon, is recommending to ourselves a thought process that we, we ask two questions. Fire Department, by consensus with the management team, is prepared to ask for your authorization to prepare a November fourth. Whatever, four. Election in this coming November to ask the question on issuing a general obligation bond for construction and rehab of a couple of buildings. That leaves the maintenance, that and these other programs that the other department heads and I concur are more likely to, not more likely, a different question for levies in May of ninety-eight. And we're hoping to springboard from that into May. And that should happen. We, we need to be talking about that. We've asked for budget numbers today. They're not good. And with one thing, and there's all kinds of excuses. There is for everything. But we hear, again, the, they're still going to be revising and reevaluating of the measure fifty. We may, we heard today, in fact, we may be in compression. We may not have, there may not be a capability going on. We, because of rolling back of the tax base, that may have put us into compression automatically. There may not be an ability to even go out for money. We may have to cut on top of it. There's so much uncertainty with those, those are the issues, that I don't want to size that, but yeah, we need to talk about it because actually your prioritization is, is just as important if we have to start downsizing something else. I think it works in reverse also. What's important, what we need to build back, but I think it also shows how it works the other way. The other kicker to that was all day yesterday, I and, and several days before that, the city attorney was involved with, again, with the, this model cities business. This is just, this is really going to be devastating, but again, we, we're taking the idea that we want to, we're going with both eyes open. There's, they're making no bones about what ultimately is going to happen. Ultimately, the franchise fees are going away. Ultimately, the residential customers are going to pay more for power. The commercial is going to lower. That's the way it's going to work. The bigger you are, the bigger power broker you can be when you purchase electricity. The smaller person, unless you're in a PUD or one of those, you're, you're just gonna, upfront, you may, upfront, you may make, you may have some savings. Long-term, there's no bones about it. You're in a lousy position unless you're an aggregate broker that you can buy power. These things are all just, are blowing us away as far as any planning. I will tell you again, though, the departments have been directed. And if they haven't, they should be talking at every level, whether it be advisory committees and the friends groups about, they should be put, formalizing things as we speak. If they're not, they should be. They are, they're telling me they are. Because we're, we're looking at several things. We're looking at an issue, for example, what we have today. We, we're struggling to be where we're at today. We're looking at what it's going to take to maintain what we have, whether we like it or not. The other one we're looking at is building back a little bit of programs that we lost. And the third is the idea of the expansion, some, some expansion of some services, some programs, new programs, and particularly police, fire, and some of the recreation opportunities to add back some, maybe some new programs that pay back long-term dividends. So it's kind of three issues. But some information we heard today, well, they're talking about potential compression already. And that's pretty disheartening. It's, yeah. I don't know how accurate it is because there were other taxing agencies in the past, in that year, they hadn't levied their full authorization. I mean, they go back and leverage their full mountain. So it's very confusing, but I wish, if we started today, I will tell you that we're gonna have, that we will ask you in your next meeting, obviously to reject, accept, or modify some, some, but some general election question in regards to fire stations. And that'll be your opportunity. You saw some of the chief's Davis's information about locations and we're going to kind of have a menu where you can select a men, throw out the whole thing or defer it to a different time. But I think it'd be, it'd be helpful so we can move forward. He's convinced, and I hope that, that he's got, that this, November is his time to do it. And I wish him the best of luck. There's going to be a lot of work pathways up between now and November. May is going to be critically hard for the rest of city services. It also depends on what happens in November with the repeal, if in fact the, the super majority issue is, is there's a resolution or not. There's a lot of discussion about that. I heard, I heard a lot of discussion about that. I think November is a walk-in election also. I don't believe it to be a male election, a male one. It's going to be harder to get people out.
Well, can you look at, can you look at the dates and meeting dates and whatnot? And let's zero in on a work session time. You know, if you go into depth a little more about this and, and start talking about the needs and as you get the information back from the staff.
We should be formalizing it. And the other issue, David should have some on spreadsheets, what is going to talk, because we're not, also, the part of the problem, it's not just what is going to be next year. It's what, what's going to take us for three to five years to implement some of your strategic planning for some long-term. So, yeah. Again, as we learn every day though, with this, with these issues, it's getting tighter and tighter and tighter. If it had, it wasn't for, a lot of departments really buckling down and some of the activity that's picked up in some of, like, for example, the police department. It's unfortunate that we're making money off some people that are finding it important to break traffic laws and stuff, but we really, really, really get hurt. And if it weren't for the, because the new development, you know, it's a, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, you know, I, I too, and you're getting it also. We're getting it all the time about, we're not processing information. And you get kind of numb to that after a while, but it's, if it wasn't for that, we'd really get hurt. This, this new development that's happening, it's going to happen, is going to be one thing with this new, with the tax. The rate-based levy, the rate-based assessment now will be, will help us long-term. And that's where we need quality development. So on one hand, right now, we're making a lot of people mad because we're not processing things quickly, which we hope to change around. I do my best to get it, Dave.
I have just a couple of things. One, I'd like to know if we've developed, and if we haven't, where we are at developing a standard sidewalk policy for the city. I'm asking for that about pulling on my second term now. It's my second term.
I'll look at it. You know, honestly, I think we have it. You just didn't like it. I don't know if we changed it or not.
Good, let me see it again. I just.
I think that was really what it was.
I mean, I'm sorry, you know, but I, and I don't, I don't say this to be critical, but I drive around a lot of communities, you know, and go a lot of places. And I don't want to get too specific, but you know, we got, we got sidewalks up to curbs, then we got sidewalks back, and we got plan strips, and we got plan strips behind curbs and fences along Myers Road. There can be weed patches, you know what I mean? We got, we got all this different things. You know, we got something for everybody. And then we got. We're experimenting. No offense, but then we got boba night wheelchair ramps down on High Street and around the senior center, and we had concrete curb cuts two blocks away. I mean, it's like, it's like we don't know what we want to do here. And you, you go into some other cities and it's standard and that's the way it is. You know, and then pretty soon in twenty years, it looks like it's organized, you know, but I'm, I don't know. I just, I just think we're trying too hard. I mean, to take something that could be somewhat simple, but I mean, I understand there can be exceptions and everything doesn't have sidewalk. If it's over on the Vidge Street, down to Canyon, Flash House, yeah, okay, we gotta write something that allows some exceptions. But there's a lot of things that are going on that I, that I think we just need to get standard. Anyway, I'd like to really know where that's at. And if you already gave it to me, give it to me again. I'll read it and I'll mark it up and vote on it here. No, I'm just kidding. I think we, I know. I think I would like, whether it's a one day, whether it's an afternoon or whatever, I'd like the commission to maybe have some type of a retreat or start thinking about getting, we need a little bit of time away where we can just, I mean, announce it. I don't care if pressure the people, but where we can talk about filling vacancies on committees and talk about just something, just sit on the top, you know. I think it's important to start planning now when we can do that, whether it's September or October. But I think we need that. It's, it's coming up. There's a lot of things going on, I know. Downtown parking permit program, is that still in place? Yes. I don't know if we've, if, if we are using the color code system still and all that. There's a lot of signs that are so far faded that you can't even tell there are parking permit programs. And it just, you know, they're just, they're, they're, I've seen several of them, but they might, just the maintenance of that, it might need to be checked. Because I wonder if I had a parking permit, you know, where, where would park, some of the painting's gone and the signs are, are faded. I mean, just there's, I need to pick up Ford D D Batter, oh, that's on another list. Is there? I put it on the wrong list. I think that's it. I got a couple others, so. Do we want to have a short exec session or do you want to talk about the ODOT?
Let's just explain it first.
Luba and. Well, the other thing I want to say is that I am Friday going down to the Oregon mayor's conference. And I think some of the topics are going to be the ones you can mention, Charlie. And I really am anxious to sit down and some sessions about government funding and where that's going. So I'll report back next week.
Mr. Mayor, it's over. The board of transport, as you know, has challenged the Stein Oil Plan Amendment zone change. I understand that you, Mr. Mayor, Rich Carson, and others have been involved with some discussions. Those discussions have been ongoing, up and down, and sometimes not going anywhere. ODOT, as foul its brief as have we, and the hearing before Luba is set for next week. ODOT has requested through Rich, I guess, that we continue to negotiate and put off the oral argument, which we could do by stipulation. And maybe ask for thirty or forty-five days to do that, if I recall correctly. And I just need some direction from you.
So what's the, what's the upside if we, if we continue with it?
If you continue with it, I think the city has a decent chance of winning the case.
There's an upside and a downside.
Yeah, I'll let that, that's thrown in here. I, I like the upside so far.
The upside is you would win the battle and the downside could be you lose the war. You know, we're in negotiations with them right now to do something out in that area. In fact, I'm thinking of just, of calling another meeting to bring back.
In fact, I'm thinking of just calling another meeting to bring back the group that's been working on this. But it probably won't improve our relationship with ODOT in the long term.
Well, I understand, but on the other hand, I don't want to get too much down the road and have and say, well, we just can't resolve this thing. We had a better chance two months earlier. I don't particularly, I mean, I'm concerned about the relationship, obviously, and they've been very supportive in the regional transportation plan and all that.
Whether we pursue litigation or not, we still have to resolve the issue because, I mean, the issue is significant in terms of, people are backing up on I-205 and creating basically a life-threatening situation. So whether, whatever we do with Stein, it doesn't matter. I think, I think ODOT and the city are committed to solving the problem, so.
Would, would, would ODOT ever view, and this might be a good reason to have a meeting with them, but would they view the decision at Luba, even if we want it, as maybe, they've done their role? They've appealed what they thought was right, but Luba's now the bad guy, not, not us, you know, it comes back. But it moves the issue then specifically off of Stein, and in general, still on the big problem. But I don't know if they'd view it that, I don't know if they would keep that.
They might view it as, this is a political agenda, not a legal one. They might view it as, as an answer to say, well, okay, we'll quit litigating this with the city and get on with doing something. In other words, whatever happens with Stein, it may influence their decision long-term about whether they're going to slam us on every amendment or every, you know, every development that comes down 213. So I don't know.
Does it, I'll go ahead, Dave.
I just wanted to ask, well, I didn't mean to interrupt, yeah, I just wanted to ask. If Stein had to abandon the site because of the flood, could it come back and start operating under, under the conditions it was there? Did it abandon it, abandon it essentially under the understanding?
Stein is operating at this moment.
That's right.
At that site. He wants, he's been flooded twice in a row now. You know, so 200 years has gone by already. He wants, so, I mean, he wants out. He wants out of there, and he doesn't want to deal with it a third time. But he is in operation in the flood plain at this moment.
That's right, he is.
Yeah.
I guess it's an issue of getting something that's a potential contaminant during a flood, out of flood. Like, I think that's for a whole reason, we're interested in doing it. And I do think that is an important issue in itself. That is, it's something that's there in the flood plain that was permitted, but probably should not be there. And I'm sure that's the reason we took the action.
We have argued that this, that Stein, from the city's point of view, is really a special case in the sense that there's a lot of environmental problems here we want to solve, like getting a gas station out of a flood line. You know, that are more important than quibbling about, you know.
Six cars.
Six cars.
I mean, it's, what about, I think we need a meeting irregardless, but what if we just delayed it two weeks? I mean, what if we?
I don't think Luba's calendar will accommodate, 30 to 45 days is probably fairly standard, because they're pretty backed up.
Yep.
Look, as far as funds are concerned, you've already spent money on the brief, and the issue is, do we pick it up next week? Or in September?
You will, at least another meeting or two to happen at ODOT, maybe find that out from a relationship standpoint, but not dismissing our right to move forward.
Absolutely not.
Well, the meeting date, the brief date is 12th, which is next Tuesday.
Your oral argument is next Tuesday.
We could hold a meeting between now and Tuesday with ODOT to go over some of these same issues about, what does it cost? What are we going to do? And then make our decision after that. Or now?
For next Tuesday, like, next Monday?
But time to them means more time for research and filing and responding better.
All the grease is involved.
So what, why is the time in their side?
I can only speculate, but I think it has to do with, they may well lose the case.
And they're trying to reach a solution prior to that. I, that would be my guess.
I would, if they're going to that clear, if they're going with a kid, I don't want it to meet tomorrow. Why change the litigation?
Well, this is, again, very sudden, that they've asked for this. If you recall, we had holed up for a while while we talked, and then it stopped.
Yeah, we've had to beg them for stuff, I don't know, this partnership has worked very well in the past, I don't know why we owe them anything. We can't get the cycling fence off 990, you've asked for that for two years. We're supposed to get pledges, I don't know what they've done for us lately.
I don't hate anybody at ODOT.
Nick, can you talk to Charlie about the fence, I mean, there's some things moving forward on that.
Very slow.
Very slow.
They don't approve our slopes, they're having slope.
Well.
It's your call, that's the thing.
If we delayed it, I mean, how does, how does that delay the move? I mean, when, I mean, I queried the, Stein doesn't move out there?
It's going to be next year anyway. I would, I mean, you know. I think Bob Stein's position would be, the longer he is, I won't use that word. The longer you take doing this, the longer he's going to be able, it will take him to move, and he will make it more, you know, you're just going to put him into another flood season, get him underwater. I think he would like to just, you know, move it, resolve it, get the legal issue behind everybody, and then move on with whatever, you know, the improvements we need to be made are. So in terms of, where he's, probably us personally, I mean, as a city, it's less of an issue for him, it is very personal, and he wants this thing moved along, and he, every day is a problem for him.
It would be nice, Mr. Mayor, to have Mr. Stein join you in the case.
Look, it is our interest that we take it out of the flood plain. And if we delay it, is there the potential that it could be there during another flood season?
Yes.
Well, I think it's going to be there anyway.
Yeah, I think it would.
It will be there either way. He can't.
I should say, in addition.
Oh, I don't, no, I don't think that, I don't think two right now, I think definitely one. I kind of think we should give it another shot with a meeting or two, and then hold it and say, look, you know, this, you know, we're not removing, we're just, 30 days is the most I want to do, just to keep the feet to the fire, but I'm not ready to throw in the towel and just swing it yet, you know, I don't know.
You can just consider this an update, learn what then.
I hate to say.
Unless you tell me otherwise, I intend to grant their request and kick it over to September.
Thank you. Anything else, Charlie?
The only thing I had was, I had some little stuff to respond back to. I need a date from all of you, actually, now, if you want to get together on, just, I don't know, this thing's not right either, I don't think, but to process information as a commission, some dates that makes sense for you. I need, really, what I need the dates next week from you is, I need you to pick, all of you to pick a date that works. We've, we are, we're scheduling photos, individual photos of the city commissioners, and then group photos of all the commissioners and your boards and advisory committees to put up. Professionally have done this time, and they're going to be done by Northwest Imaging, and you'd like to have the city commissioners meet all in the same morning down at the interpretive center. He's got a site down there that he's picked out that he thinks would be very nice to do. So we're looking for a day of the week that you could look out, a week from now, maybe, the morning, preferably. He said the lighting's better, that makes sense to you? You don't need to do it now, but if you can kick something around what makes sense when you're available, there's work scheduled.
I'm open, I'm, right now, I'm open any day.
If we're scheduled far enough out a week or so, 10 days in advance, it could be.
Is, we should check to see, I don't know if they're on vacation.
I haven't talked about this at all. Maybe, if you're out with a week's notice, anytime would be okay.
Why don't we pick, I'm going to pick like next Thursday morning or something, just see. Next Thursday morning, like at 9:00 or something, or how early, 8:00?
Well, let me find out what time, his time was specific to lighting.
Okay, see what he means by, I mean, yeah.
The 14th, morning of the 14th, tentatively?
Yeah, and maybe slip that into the orange sheet if we have time and.
What would be the, what day is the 14th?
Thursday.
What is the, how about the day prior or day after, does that make any sense?
I'm good on either, earlier than that.
Yeah, same here. Friday morning is right on.
Okay, the 13th to 14th, I mean, preferably the 14th to 13th possibly. I'll confirm that, and then I'll coordinate with the two commissioners.
How fancy is this?
It's up to you. Individual photos, and we want to put them, we're talking about hanging them, that includes some framing. And then if you want own photos, you can purchase one. They'll be hanging someplace, and all boards of commission, group photos. Mary Palmer is coordinating.
Okay, anything else, Charlie?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, welcome aboard. Mr. Engineer, we expect it to be, you know, this is kind of shipshape by next week, no problem there. All right, hey, good night, thank you.